Discussion, action, hiring of engineering firm for upcoming, well, sorry, it's really dark. Hey, presentation Miller and Associates, we have Gary and Chris, the floor is yours gentlemen.
Thank you. First of all, my name's Gary Steele. You guys are used to seeing me come do your one and sixes and I've done some projects for you and stuff and, but a couple of things tonight, one, I want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to entertain us and allow us to give you this presentation tonight. And also, we want to make this more of a just kind of a discussion and less of a formal presentation. So if you've got questions, and that goes for the audience as well, if you've got questions of Chris or myself as we're going through this, interrupt us, get your questions answered, and then we'll move on. And so with that, Chris Miller has been with our company forever and is a groundwater expert and a well expert. He's done wells all over the state of Nebraska from varying sizes to huge to little tiny 50 gallon a minute wells for irrigation, but I'm going to not take any more of his time, I'm going to allow him to give a presentation for your water well project. All right, make sure everybody can see it, I'll try to walk in front of everybody. I may end up just sitting down and kind of letting everybody be able to see the screen, but I have a voice that carries, if you can't hear me, let me know. But again, Chris Miller, Miller Associates. I have, really my degree is in civil engineering, I have a master's in groundwater modeling. So I thought I would do this great stuff in Nebraska, I'd be a groundwater modeler. Turns out that's not used that often, it's starting to be now, but 25 years ago when I got it, hardly anybody uses it. They just drilled the well wherever they wanted, we put the well down. But it's starting to work out now for us, a little better, better shape. Why we're here tonight is you guys have an administrative order. And I like walking and talking with my hands, so this is really going to be tough for me. Usually, when you administer your order, or you're looking for a new well site, you're looking for one of three things. We had a failure replacement of a well, then your well water quality is good. You have additional quantity, you're growing so much, you need more capacity. In our case, it's water quality. So you guys have nitrate issue, it's been plaguing you guys for years. And this is not our first AO, you guys had one in 2018. But finding a well is getting harder and harder to do. And so what we like to talk about is, first thing you have to address this AO. I mean, that's the primary reason that we're putting in a new well field, looking for a new site, or whatever we're going to do. They're requiring you to take the two wells that you have and use only well, you have one well really now running on. We'll talk about one well that's in production, and we need to find a solution. And I'll show you tonight probably somewhat quicker than later. As part of this administrative order, this is just an excerpt, but you guys have two steps that involve the engineering world. And that is, we have to provide written quarterly reports. And we do that as part of our services to our consultants, to our clients as a consultant. And we would do that when we write this, if we get to the project and do this PER. So we would write those, or help you write those quarterly reports that are required until we get this solution resolved. The other one is you have to retain an engineering service, you have to retain engineer to write what they call a PER, Preliminary Engineering Report. Okay, so in that PER, we have to decide, what's the best long-term solution for Plainfield? And that's Plainview, that's what we gotta do. So in that, there's several steps we have to take, you have time to do it. You have until April to hire engineer, you have a year to get this PER done. But in that time, we want to be moving forward. We'll talk about when we want to sample wells, if we want to look and do test holes, and things like that. But we want to do that during irrigation season, so we're not drilling a well or trying to sample it. We could do it and use some irrigation wells if we want. Some of them, we'll talk about, may not be good candidates for that. So your current situation, my little pointer here, you guys really have or had four wells in your system. You probably have seen this several times, but this was our ban shell well that is now not currently disconnected, maybe not yet, but will be, not in service.
Not in service.
The AO that we got was for this well, which is right next to it. But that's what this current administrative order is for, is the nitrates are high in that. This well was a 62 well that hasn't been used on emergency use. And so your only real water supply is right here, a 1989 well. And that is the well that we're currently using. So when you look at this, if we have to, we could use this, but nitrates are, I mean, you have to start providing bottled water anyway, if you start using these wells, but you have one water supply that we really have to address. So as our experience, we put together this map actually for this presentation, but we went through and just started pulling wells. Well projects we've done, what history we've done with wells. So we've done over 300 well projects. As Gary said, they've ranged in size from, I did a well field that had 30 wells, pumped about 40,000 gallons a minute. I had 22 miles of 42 inch pipe. So that's an extreme, you don't get to do that very often. But we've also done a single well that pumps 50 gallons a minute for a supply for the town that has 25 people. So the whole gamut of projects we've done, you look around and you can see, we obviously started in the central Nebraska, and that's where our company started. And as you can see, we're starting to grow out. So we have about 70 employees, and we're a full-service engineering company. So we would take care of everything from your wells, the pipeline, all that stuff, and write the PER. GIS, so before we started using the buzzword GIS, and everybody uses it now, about 25 years ago, we started using this to develop wellfields. Me and one of the guys that's worked with us for 30 years, he really got into this, and we started using it to do wellfield searches. Some of the data and the resources that we used, I used on the Kansas Nebraska litigation team. So we used this system way before I think it was really popular, if you want to say that. So we use this tool, and I'm going to do is, I'm going to give you an example of a project that we did. And I'm going to walk you through, it's the same process that we would use for you guys. So this is a product, this is a, this is an actual project that we did. It's a PER that we did for a community. They had an existing treatment plant, so they were treating iron and manganese. But treatment is expensive. The cost of treatment never goes down, your O and M, everything goes up every year. Us as a firm, we recommend that lasts. If you can get away with not treating, then really and truly, I think long-term, you're okay. That's not always the case. It's like this community, they had to treat, but they wanted to take a look, because it had been 40 years since their plant was built. They want to take a look at what other options they have. Has the water quality changed? Can they do something different? So I'm going to step you through not the whole process, but I guess some of the highlights. The first thing that you must know, is we define this study area. So this red line here, each one little square is a square mile. Each one has black dots as a well. So you can see the concentration of wells. You can see that we looked here at about 100 square miles area around that community. And this right here is groundwater flow, groundwater direction, it's called equal potential line. And so groundwater flows perpendicular to these lines. This is 2,000 elevation, this is 1950. So you can see by the flow arrows, if you had a drop of water here, it would flow this direction. That's important to know, to know what's upstream of your system. Do you have a feed lot? Do you have something that's ejecting? What do you have that's upstream of where you're pumping water? So flow direction is very important, the first thing you want to know. Now like I said, and each one uses a well, it's either a potential contamination source, or a place to sample, or what do you have up there? So we always start with groundwater flow direction, and we start with what's upstream of us. Saturation thickness. If you think about this, this is how much water do I have that I can draw from? Do I have a column that's 100 feet, that 200 feet, that 300 feet? What do I have for saturated thickness? How much of that, those materials are saturated that I can pull water out of? Sometimes a lot of people thought that there was, I mean, that the groundwater, it was a big hollow cave, and we pull it out, and it's not the case. If you think about it, you think about, you have a glass with a straw in it, that's our well, and we drink, and we're pulling water out of it, ice cubes are the media. It's flowing through gravel, it's flowing through sand. So different media, if you have a malt, it's thicker, it flows slower. That tells us our production, our yield, it's called transmissivity. So saturated thickness tells me what we're doing. If you look at here again, on all these, you see the study area, you see a mile. And you see that the community was right here, which it is. As you go to the northwest, we go from about a 340 to 360 feet of saturated thickness, to 420 to 440, again, 100 feet of depth. So saturated thickness, doesn't matter what's above it, we're talking how much water bearing material is there? Not how much clay is on top of it or any of that, it's how much water bearing material is there? What's the saturated thickness? So here, you know, if you went down here, if you went to the south, you're losing saturated thickness. You're getting less water. So right away, you start looking at this, hey, I probably want to go northwest, just based on saturated thickness. Okay? One thing you want to look at is USGS is really good, NRDs are really good about having monitoring wells. So what we want to look at in a monitoring well, is what has historically happened in this area that, we pick an area we want to look at. Up here, I have four examples, just real quickly, I'll go over them, you guys have probably all seen these, but left hand here, this is depth to water. So you have depth of water, this one's 0 to 20 feet, this one's 170 to 230. But each one of these represents a different type of aquifer response. And those are important, and we're going to develop a well field. How does the aquifer respond to pumping? So here, you see this thing's pretty flat, it's from 1940 to 2000. So in 60 years, you actually see that about, before 2000, it was back up to its highest level ever. It has recharged or maintained constant over a record of 60 years. Be a great place to develop a well. You have good recharge, you have good area. Next one here to my right, so again, you see that this is an irrigation fluctuation. So it started out here, this is in the, probably right about the 70s, we're at 2000. It's dropped maybe 10 feet over that period. So we're seeing a loss, we're seeing a decline in that area. And we see when the irrigation wells kick on, that aquifer loses water, drops way down here, and recharges when it comes in the fall. Typical for a lot of areas if you have a small aquifer. But you have to account for this, when you're designing your well, you don't put the pump at the top. You make sure you have a hole deep enough that you put the pump in the bottom, so in case somebody puts a well close to you, you can go deeper. And make sure your horsepower is set up so you can do that. This is one that we have, that you don't want to be in, this is dropped from 60 to 100 plus feet. It responds a little bit to our irrigation, but it's constantly declining. That area is not being recharged, we're not seeing a lot of recharge in that area because it's being overpumped, and it's declining every year. And this is what you love to see. The last one is, is from the 50s to 2000, you see a steady incline, so that's definitely a recharge area. Typically around a canal, a lake, something's been built that's feeding us water. So you can learn a lot from just water levels and development of wellfields. So using the GIS stuff, so this is what we started doing, was we can get the database for all the wells in Nebraska, Kansas, and we start picking out what we want to know about those wells through the registrations. So again, we have our study area, our 100 square miles, our community's in the middle, and we plot gallons per minute. Now, as you guys all know, when the drillers were out there in the 70s and 80s, everybody wanted to pump a bigger well than the guy next door. So the well here, it was 1,000 gallons a minute, and next time I drilled a well on the neighbor's property, neighbor said, mine was 2,000 gallons a minute. So you don't always trust these records. And irrigation wells always produce more than a missful well, because of the well design. We bring it in at a slower velocity, so we last longer. So when you do a missful well, you can drill it right next to irrigation well. If you design it properly, it will last longer, but it comes in slower, you don't have the capacity. So that's one of the reasons you see these, but this is a great indication of where you want to go. So what we do is we classify these, these are like less than 300 gallons a minute, the white's over 1,000. And we do a color image. And so we can say, hey, this looks dark, it's getting lighter, it's getting lighter. Hey, we're going northwest, but why is that? Well, it's deeper, saturated thickness is more. So this seems to make sense, our data's starting to come together. There's a lot of wells right here, but there's no wells here, so hey, maybe this is an area we could look at. Well depth. Well depth, I think is going to be very important to your study. And I'll kind of explain why, but well depth, I think there's some untapped potential maybe in your area. So we do the same thing, we plot this, and again, we look at well depth. And are the wells all getting down to the bottom of the aquifer? Are we seeing people drilling all the way down and tapping the bottom or not? Because a lot of times for irrigation well, a lot of times for domestic wells, they don't go all the way down, they just get to where they need enough water, and they screen from top to bottom, and that's what, that's what we do. So well depth is important, and we can see where they're starting to get deeper. Then we can sort those by dates, we can classify them by dates, and we can say, all these red ones are drilled new, and they're starting to go deeper, so we have an issue. So we can kind of play with this data and see what's out there. So we take all this stuff, and there's other things that we use, and we do what we call a composite map. And so we take all this stuff and lay it over one big square. And I can see that these squiggly lines here is my well depth. And so it's getting deeper, like we said up here. We can pick, these radiuses here are 1,000 foot off the well. So we know that we have to keep a well away from that encroach upon it if we want to drill a well field. So we draw the 1,000 foot circles. We can look at groundwater flow direction, we can look at saturated thickness. I can look at what they call transmissivity, how well the water flows. We put all that on a composite map, and then we come to a meeting, and we talk about it, and we pick where we think that we want to look for well sites. So we picked areas that didn't have any wells in it, that we thought the landowners would be willing to work with us, which is really a big one. And we said, hey, this may be a good area, let's see what's out there. And then we sample. So obviously, there's no wells in our area, so we have to go around, look at irrigation wells, and we sample. And you probably can't read the numbers, but we are looking for iron and manganese, that was their plant, that they had to build, they were treating for iron and manganese removal, not nitrates. But we look at this, you can look around and see, anything that had red, we exceeded an MCL of some drinking water standard. So the only time we didn't, when we got way up here. Now, not in our study area, but everything around our study area had violations. So we do sample wells outside of the study area, just to get an idea of it, this was it. Well, when you take and you start going through that, look to the left. It was too costly, so we did the cost, load of cost to drill wells up here, and is it worth the risk? So you can't see those, but there still were some iron and manganese, nitrates were 2.3. And they said, okay, as a board, they decided, that's 10 miles away. If I put a well out there, and it costs $5 million to develop, and my lifespan may be 20 years, is it worth that, or should we just keep treating what we got? So this community ended up, and that's kind of what we do, is we work with you guys and make sure we all make decisions we're all happy with. They end up, we rebuilt the treatment plant. They knew how to run it, they knew what they wanted, and they didn't think it was worth going 10 miles and doing. And that may be the answer. But you don't know until you do the study. So, we did our little homework for you guys, and so we're giving you a preview of a PER. So we tried to look at your nitrate values. So I pulled up and plotted all your historical nitrate values from 2009 to present, I didn't go back any farther. But this, which is orange line right here, is your 62 well. So back in 2009, we had four samples left, and it went from about an eight in nitrates to 12. The red dotted line right here is 10, that exceeds your MCL. So when it jumped, it went right up. Okay, so that well's been out of service, we haven't sampled it. So it's been out of service for a while.
Oh, I pulled sample here, last year or so, but I mean, I still run one small distance away, so.
Which one is that again?
That's 63, it's the one in the northeast corner of the town.
Why is that?
Clear up north.
On 4th Street.
Okay, so then you look at the well, the last one we got a violation was, was this 54-1, this is the gray line right here, and our skyrocket. So it seems, when you look at this, this started in maybe 14, and we are violating by 17. We have about four years' record track on that well. From the time that it starts elevating to the time that exceeds an MCL, there's about four years according to this if it's pumping. Whatever capacity it has, whatever nitrate source we have, we see four years. So the blue one, this is a well that, again, the latest one we had, we're in the fours to fives, and say 2017, 16, we're violating by 19. You have five years, four years? And we see that the nitrates jump from here to here, and we're exceeding the MCL. Your last remaining well is this yellow one, your 89 well. And it's been pretty constant, we were in the fours and fours to sixes. It spiked up a little bit, it's been down below six, but this is what bothers me. We see a trend going up. And if it's historical, from here to here, you have about four years, based on the other wells that you guys have been using.
Like that blue one, why did it, why would something like that take such a drop?
You know, if you had flooding, if you had something that recharged, something that, an event that caused that to go down.
Okay, and it wouldn't go like that?
It could. I mean, I don't know, like I said, wet that well if it wasn't being used.
I don't know, them wells are only a block and a half apart.
I know.
Yeah. One of them is this way, and one of them, yeah.
That's why I just.
Yeah, it drops, I mean, it goes from nine to four or five, I mean, it drops.
I think there's a good explanation besides, I mean, that or...
You know, if it was a wet year, maybe that you didn't have irrigation pumping, and the water table stayed up. Nitrates tend to want to float. I'm stealing away from one of our slides, but it's a good time to talk about it. Nitrates tend to want to stay on the top of the aquifer. When you pump, you're pulling them down. So if you had something else going on, irrigation wells didn't pull it down like it normally does, maybe the nitrates didn't make it down to your screen, possibly. There's lots of, historically, like I said, I'm shooting the dark like you guys, but that's what we see for your water quality. And again, this was my slide that I was talking about nitrates and drawdown, but grounds up here, our nitrates get pulled in there. And well, well construction makes a huge difference. Old wells, irrigation wells, anybody that's been out, worked in the field, they know that, they used to gravel pack, which means they would drill through sand, level, clays, all this stuff, put gravel from top to bottom. So when that well pumped, it was pulling all the nitrates from the top, right down the casing to the bottom. We don't do that anymore. We try to seal off any aquifer by state statute now. We did a grout study in Nebraska, and we showed that that was beneficial. And so we seal those off now, to try to keep those nitrates from going down through different layers. But when you look at the number of wells we have out there, there's a lot of pinholes through there. So you gotta kind of be careful, watch that too. Around you guys, so Plainfield, it's right here. There was a couple observation wells, I pulled up the data just to see. Again, this would be part of our PER, but the one north, which is about four or five miles to the west of you guys, this is from 2011, basically, to 2018, they quit monitoring it. So you had about six years of the data. But you can see that we have the same thing going on here, we have a dip from maybe 30 feet to 60 feet during irrigation season, to recharges and flatlines. Now, what's nice is it went down, 12, 13, we had some stuff that went down, but it's coming back up. I mean, you're coming back up to the 2012 history, so we're seeing that at least it's staying semi-level. We're not seeing a big decline, we're not seeing a big raise either. But we at least at the 2017, we're seeing good. This well, which was the farther south one, if I back up one, it's this well right here, south of Neely. That one, we're seeing the dips during irrigation season, so there's wells out there that pump to draw that down. But you're seeing an incline in water level, so we're seeing some of a recharge area. They're not using as much, the NRD's probably regulating it and limiting wells, and we're seeing that. So you can see some impacts going up, so that's good. So the other thing you can look at for groundwater flow direction is your wellhead protection plan. NDEE, used to be NDEQ, does a well protection plan for everybody to try and figure out where your water's coming from. So this is your map, it was generated eons ago, but these are your wells. And what this is telling me is groundwater flow is this way. So when you look at right here, this red line right here, that's actually a 10 to 20 year timeframe. So you're pulling your water, if water's in here, this is 10 to 20 years, by the time you pump these wells, it will make it to your well. So you guys are looking at, your water quality is pulling at least from here, because you've been pumping them longer than 20 years. But this is the direction, they're going from here up to your wells. So when you see these wells that are really tight, these show that they don't overlap, which is not really true, in my opinion. And this fluctuates over time. But this well here, which is your 63 well, it's pulling right on top of this one. So those are pulling the same water quality. So if you were pumping the 63 well, and you weren't pumping this well, you'd still be pulling nitrates toward that well. So you'd be pulling them, even if it's not pumping, we're pulling them to us when we're pumping that well. Nebraska Department of Natural Resources, you guys have probably seen this. The NRDs, the Brazil Mill or Brazil Creek Groundwater Management Area, all talks about nitrate values, nitrate things, they're high, the whole area's high. This is a map that shows, anything that's yellow or green, yellow's approaching 10 or 10, green is good, anything that's orange to red is bad. And of course, you guys are right here, bad.
We're part of the triangle.
You are, you are.
We're in the triangle.
Yep, yes, you are. Now, what's interesting about this is, so you're pulling water this way. We've been doing Brunswick's wells for 20, 25 years, and I just pulled their last sample off DNR, and they're less than 1, well, they're like 1.3, they're less than 2 milligrams per liter nitrates right there, right in the thick of that Brunswick well. So I don't know, I put a whole lot of faith in here, it depends the intensity, it depends how many wells they sample, because the same thing, when we generate these raster graphic images, you know, they just take from well to well, and they kind of split the difference between there. So if you have a large well intensity, you get better data, if they're far apart, it just color codes between it. So there are spots out there, like I said, this one, historically, it's been at least 20 years that things have been below, below three or four. And I know that, and like I said, I checked it. So why is that true? So this is, we did the same thing, so this is our raster image, this is one of our figures. I pulled up all the nitrate data I could find on the clearinghouse, the state, and I contoured it. So the same thing applies. Green and yellow, good, red and orange, bad. And you guys are pulling water from here to here. So this is what we have out here. We have red, we have high nitrates, they're coming to us. We know it, you've seen it, you have an AO. But Brunswick is here, and what I wanted to say is, if you look at this, their screen is at 315 feet deep. Your guys' wells are 140 to 160?
120 to 140, yeah.
Okay. So there's quite a bit, and up here, if you look at these well designs that we did, we have a clay that stops the top, and we have a gravel pack, which I would never do now to this day. I would put bentonite all the way through here, and then we bentonite sealed here. But for this down days, these days, we bentonite the whole thing up. This was done in 99. But then I had my screen down to the bottom, and again, this is the well that had 1.3, I think, in January. So depending how, what the well depths are around here, depending what the wells are drilled to, is there some chance, it may be slim, that we have some areas that we could look at drilling wells deeper and sealing them, and giving some, at least if not blending, maybe a new source? This is your well log, maybe 91. So as you look at this, I just had the log, I knew the well construction, but I could get the log. And you have a coarse sand, medium gravel, 100 to 120, 120 to 132, medium to coarse gravel, yellow clay, mixed gravel, yellow ochre. Below you guys should be what they call the shale, it's a dark black shale. This well log didn't touch it. Now, this yellow ochre could be weathered shale. I do not know that, and it could just be yellow clay that's been weathered. There may be something deeper. But the ground elevation of this well is about 1960, if your bottom well is 140. The bottom elevation of that well, if you look at an elevation from above, means it was about 1550. Okay? I tell you all that for a reason. This is a cross-section across several counties. So we have Dakota, Dixon, Wayne, Pierce. Here is Plainview. So this line right here is about 1550. So that's about the depth of your well that I'm seeing. And again, this cross-section, depending where it's at, it's a couple miles from you guys, so it's not exactly what crossed your well, but it gives you a representation of what's going on. If you look at this, this TO, this is the Ovala Formation. This KP, this is the shale, this is our confining unit. There appears to be that we have more capacity based on these test holes from the Conservation Survey Division, that there might be some aquifer bearing material below there. And if it's separated by place, you might be able to go deeper in your sites. Taking all the fun out of my PER, you guys know that, right? But I wanted to show that, so this is, this is your shale, this is the Ovala group, and this is the sand and gravel. And at this level, we see those sand and gravel seem to match up with the well log that I had before, that could be about 100 to 140 feet below ground.
So you're talking about our current well sites currently?
Currently, where your wells are right now. Where your wells right now is where the bottom of this dotted line is. And this section shows that the sand and gravel, which is this yellow area, is right about where I'm seeing it. Okay? So I went four miles east, I just pulled the log, went four miles east of you guys. Just randomly picked a well, okay? The ground was 1820, so it's quite a bit higher, so you have a lot more bearing area above it. The bottom of the well was 330, it's deeper because you have more stuff above it, not necessarily more aquifer. But there was a clay lens right here, that's about... But there was a clay lens right here that's about twenty-five feet deep, thick. And if nobody has drilled into this, which this guy obviously has, I don't know where his screen's at, but somebody drilled a test hole here, this twenty-five foot of clay would stop a lot of nitrate movement, especially if it was sealed correctly. And then below that was sand, seventy-four feet of it. Sand doesn't yield as well as a, a gravel, a gravel well. So the gravel and big gravel you have, it wouldn't yield as much. It would take less capacity. It would probably pump, say, three hundred gallons a minute. I'm just picking a number. But it would probably be lower in nitrates, because it's deeper, and it's got a confining unit above it. It's like uniform, again, as if it's uniform across a large area, you could have something that would work there. But they get shale.
I imagine you know how deep the shale is.
The shale on this one is three thirty.
We know how thick the shale is?
Oh, it can be anywhere from five hundred to a thousand feet. It's, it's a long ways.
It is real thick.
It can be, yes.
And I just happen to know that up at the river, we hit eight feet of shale and decided to pull water from the shale.
Oh, yeah.
You know, to get away from other sorts of problems. But if you go through the shale, then the quality goes to crap.
You hit the Dakota Aquifer. Yeah, you go deeper and it's really salty. So, so this one hit the shale though. This one tagged shale. They drilled thirty feet into the shale, had three thirty. So I know this one hit shale. So they hit the bottom of we consider water bearing formation. So I say all that because when I look at Plainview again, and this is, again, some of our maps from our PER. But when we start looking at it, if you see this big two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, that's saturated thickness. So using exactly what you guys have here, you guys are in the two hundred foot range of saturated thickness maybe. And as you move toward Brunswick, as you move this way, I'm getting into four hundred, five hundred. I'm seeing a lot more of that thickness. I'm seeing a lot better potential maybe of drilling a well deeper and getting better water quality. So this right here, these little squiggly lines with the little numbers seventeen fifty, seventeen hundred, sixteen fifty, that's your groundwater flow direction. So this confirms that Plainview, if I was pumping a well, it would flow from high to low, perpendicular, go right to here. So it kind of confirms what your well protection map has, but your flow direction is this way. So when you think of those nitrates, that big pocket we have, we're pulling that to us. So eventually, we're getting it to us. If you go down, like I said, so you go up here, so this is two hundred, this is one hundred feet thick. So if you go up toward Creighton, we have less water and probably it'll, it'll be saturated nitrates a lot more. And if you kind of go parallel to this line here toward Foster, you would see that two hundred foot thickness right there. So if you want to look for a thicker, deeper source, you're going west. Western lead. So...
You're aiming to the nitrate field though? You're hoping to get below it?
Yes, I would hope to get below it and seal off the top. So that's, those are options. We've been talking, I spent this whole time talking about source, talking about blending, talking about ways to get maybe nitrates down. That doesn't always work. I don't know if it'll work here. I mean, you, you know as well as I do, I don't know that. I just don't know if it'll work or not. So the last couple of years, I just want to talk about some projects, other ones we've done. So Polk, Nebraska, Polk has two wells, one really high in nitrates, one really low in nitrates. Drilled the deep well, the shallow well. We blend them. It works fine. You have to set them up. You have to blend them. You have to have controls and do that, but Polk in two thousand nineteen, we put in their blending controls. So we got them below their nitrate limits by blending with a deep well, a shallow well. Benedict, same thing. They had two wells, high nitrates. None of their logs showed anybody tap shale. So we went out, we drilled a test hole. Lo and behold, we had another fifty foot of sand and gravel below where their wells are at, and there's a flying, there's a confining unit of clay, because nobody drilled through it because they didn't need it. Drilled another well, we're blending, so we can get it down. Benedict, we had water quality issues, though that one had high iron and magnitudes. When we blend it, it meets all the standards. And now you see that sometimes. You see a different water quality, but then we know we had a different aquifer. It's not seeing those nitrates. McCool Junction, so this one Gary and I are doing right now, it's out for bids. McCool Junction had the same thing. They have high nitrates. Gary is working with them. And he said, you know, let's pull the logs. We pulled the logs. We went through the PER process. And we got money from the NRD to try and drill some test holes, and all the logs showed that everything just stopped. Talked to the drillers, and they said, well, we didn't, going deeper, why would we? We don't need any more water. They get five hundred gallons a minute. All right, I agree. Let's drill some test holes. So we went next to each one of their three wells and drilled test holes. And when we did that, one of them only had about ten foot of sand and gravel below it that was worth anything. Two of them had about thirty-five feet. So we said, oh, let's pick the one we think is the best. We put it right in the middle of the two wells that we're looking at. And we drilled this test hole, and we pumped it and met all water quality standards. So we're designing a blending system with a blending wellhouse. We're pumping the two wells that were each side to this third well. We're going to blend them all, taking the tank. You don't always get that lucky, but you may. Worst case, again, last stage is treatment. If you have to treat, we treat. I mean, that's, that's usually the last case scenario. As bleak as your maps look for nitrates around here, you have to seriously look at treatment in your PER. Binkman, we did an ion exchange. Ion exchange treatment has some great advantages. It doesn't waste a lot of water. So if you look at, for every gallon you pump in an ion exchange system, you may lose five to seven percent of that is going to waste. Which isn't a bad ratio. However, ion exchange in order to treat, just like the softener in the bottom of your house, what you have in the, underneath the sink, whatever you got, it wastes a lot of salt. You have to feed it with salt. That salt waste is terrible to get rid of. You have to drill through the shale usually and eject it into Dakota Aquifer below us. It's a non-podable source. And the injection well alone can be a million to two million dollars. And the permitting of that is twenty-five thousand dollars a year paid to the state of Nebraska. So ion exchange, even though it has very low waste, has a really hard dispel of its waste. Whereas Creighton, familiar with Creighton, has an RO system. I think they had the first one in Nebraska. We did upgrades in that one in two thousand fifteen. But an RO system, it wastes about thirty-five percent of your water. So for every hundred gallons, you have about thirty-five gallons going to the crypt, to the river, to your water treatment plant, wherever you're taking it, it's waste. Because that's just the process and how it takes it out. So treatment, it works, but there's drawbacks and there's benefits, every one of them. How many do you have on time, Jerry?
About twenty-two, so.
Perfect. Closing comment. So really, first thing you guys have to do is address this, this AO. You guys are required to hire an engineer. We're hoping to expand your associates. But you have to address these, and in the PER, you gotta make sure you look at blending, new source, consolidation. And you really consolidate with somebody. In your case, probably not, but you have to evaluate it as part of the PER. You do treatment. You also look at your water system. And there may be other things we want to look at your water system in that PER that we want to address. We'll look at your water rates. We'll look at also what your, how much gallons you pump, what your peak day is, what your average day is. If we look at a new source, what do we really need? So all those things will apply in your PER. We want to work with you with your solution. Like I said in the last meeting, we found a source. It was ten miles away. But they knew how to run the treatment plant. They already had the budget in there for it. They thought that they would rather go back to that. That's what they did. That's how we wrote it up. It is a joint decision. It's not where we're going to walk in and plot down a report and say, here, we're done. Here's what you should do. Doesn't work like that. We don't like doing that because it just doesn't work for people. So we would be here at meetings and talk to you. So we'll be here every step of the way. I've talked for forty minutes now, so...
I got two more points. Um, one, you're looking at the people that would do this work. Chris and I would do the work. We, we don't take your, if you give us the project, we don't take it back and give it to flunkies to work on, and, and we're just the spokesperson. You're looking at the people doing the work. The other one is funding. There is funding for this PER, and we made sure that, uh, Plainview is able to get that funding. Um, actually, you're in, in line to get it, and so we, we made sure that that was available. So there is some funding available to help you with this PER.
And we do have grant administration staff to help for the project and down the road and all that, but...
Yeah, so whatever, whatever alternative you come up with, whether it's SRF funding, USDA funding, um, or whatever, we have grant staff that, that we help you prepare those applications, put that all together, and that's part of our service. We don't charge you to, to prepare an application. Um, that's something that we just do as, as for our clients. Have we bored you to death? Have you got any questions? Did we, we open up some, some thoughts or ideas or questions?
Early stages.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There, there's a lot of questions that are unanswered, but I think they'll be answered later.
Sure.
You know, what, what do you, obviously, we don't have enough information of what do you guys think right now? I mean, it sounds like deeper is an option.
It could be. Like I said, the first thing that, I, I'll be real honest with you. The first thing we would want to do is drill a test hole next to all those wells and see where we tap shale. And, and I would not come out and drill that well by itself. I think we'd want to have the rest of our plan together, because if you want to drill test holes, it's a lot cheaper to have hire a driller and do three of them at once than it is to drill one and wait, because I just want to do... So, I mean, it's really, it's not our first rodeo. I, I'll tell you that, and anybody else you interview won't be their first either. I mean, I think you can pick an engineering company, and they can do the work for you, but we think we have a pretty good team. Done a lot of this. Um, I'm really confident in our process. I think we're one of the ones, the only ones that does this process.
And the test holes are small and low cost. Can you give them a rough idea of what the cost is?
So if you do a test hole, usually it's about ten to twenty bucks a foot, depending on what depth and what we want to do with it. When you go to case it, it's another ten to twenty bucks a foot, if you want a six inch or eight inch. And then water quality, once you get to that stage, is five thousand bucks, give or take, for a new well scan that you're required to have before you drill a municipal well. But first thing you do is you poke test holes and see what's there. We look at the geology. And we can tell by the geology if it's going to yield or what. We can get close to it. But once we know that the geology looks good, then we can start looking at, do we want to do a case well, and what do we want to do, and how do we want to pump it? But anything we do, I would recommend you guys put in a test well and pump it if we end up going somewhere else, because there's no way to predict that.
Let's say if we go somewhere, let's say we go five miles out of town.
Okay.
And yep, we definitely want to do a well here. How does that affect that person around that well?
You know, and that's, it's a good question, and it depends on well spacing, what we got. So we would look at that impact. I can calculate based on transitivity, you know, whether you're sucking through a malt or you're pulling through a pop with ice, what the interference is to that nearest well and all the surrounding wells. And that's part of what you have to do. I mean, honestly, you have to see what that impacts, just like this gentleman right here had. His well was, somebody drilled a well next to him, dropped down, and luckily, he had enough casing left in the bottom, he lowered his pump. We don't want that to happen, because we would be liable for that. I'm just telling you, we would be liable for that.
And then even with other things that they, like fertilizers and...
Yep. And that's where that, that geology is very important. I mean, those confining units, those clay units that's between there, what that formation is above, is very important to define. We do a lot of, they call it E-logs, but electric logs. And so that really defines, better than a, a driller goes out there, and they, a lot of those drills are really good. When they drill through it, they can feel that rig, what it goes through clays, when it goes through sands, when it goes through gravels. When they're done, we can run the, call it E-log down there, and it actually sends out a current and brings it back, and it plots that, and you can get really good data. It tells you where that water flows and where it doesn't. And we use those in almost all of our test holes anymore. It's an extra buck a foot, and it, it gives us data that's invaluable, in my opinion.
And like you said, basically, that confining layer, when we did McCool Junction, we had forty feet of clay. And we had ten plus nitrates above, and all the garbage stays up on top, and we had less than two nitrates below. And so it just, it, it provides that, that separation from everything that's, that's coming in from the surface.
And then also, just out of curiosity, okay, irrigation well, two hundred and fifty feet, four years ago, I think it was like seventy grand. What's the difference? I mean...
I get this question.
I bet you do. And I don't know enough about well drilling, and I don't know anything about all this. That's why I'm asking.
Podable water.
Yeah, podable water is a very good answer. So when you do a municipal well, there's certain license permits. We do design the well differently. So if you have an irrigation well, if you guys, if you think about it, the biggest thing is velocity into the well, okay? So when you think of, the irrigation well has stream, if they want to pump a thousand gallons a minute, and you're pumping through a sixteen inch casing, that water may be coming through there, let's say, at five feet per second, okay? And when you have that high velocity, it pulls sand. On an irrigation well, it doesn't really matter. When I pull sand through there and I put it up on the field, if I pull a dump truck load of sand every year, you'll never see that on your field. On municipal well, we want to be at less than the point one feet per second. We want to bring it in really slow, so we're not pulling sand, we're, we're not pulling it through our filter pack that we designed. Because when we have a truckload of sand and it goes to your tower, it goes to your customer, they all know it. So part of it is, is you design it differently. You have different screen slot sizes. We have gravel pack that are defined for what we want, to keep all that sand and stuff out of there. But is that a huge cost? Typically not. I mean, you really shouldn't see the cost that we see. I mean, a new well is three hundred thousand dollars, well in a wellhouse. But you know, you don't have a wellhouse on a, on an irrigation well typically, but you do it. We also put in like our new wells, a, a, you know, a little technology, we'll put in a water level monitor. So you don't have to go out and dip it every time to see where the depth is. It'll bring right up and show you. Whether it shows you on the wall, it sends it to a SCADA system, it doesn't matter. We can do whatever system you want, but we can track that, that water table. And we want to do that because historically, then if you see nitrates, we see something happen. You see nitrate drop from nine to five. I could go back and look and say, hey, my water level did this. This is what happened, or it gives me some data. So some guys not up here giving you a presentation saying, I don't know what happened twenty years ago, but you would have that data. So...
I'm just curious to know too, you'd say you did have to go five miles out to the, to farm?
Yep.
What, what kind of cost is it for the city to like the landowner? Is it like a lease or is it just a fee or...
You, we've done everything you can think of. We, we, I've bought an acre of land. I bought a fifty by fifty chunk. We have bought entire sections. Quarter sections, I should say. Quarter sections of land. Because the farmer said, if you're going, if you want my thing, I want to sell the whole quarter section. And then they become, either you become farmers and you rent it out, prop, whatever you want to do to it, or you just take out your piece and you sell it. So it's really up to you and the landowner how you handle that. And, and there will be a lot of differences. If you, if you go out there, the other thing I would tell you, just from experience, is if you're on two different landowners, bring them both in and talk to them at once. Do not try to talk to this one, talk to this one. This guy will say, I want this much an acre, and this guy says, I want this much an acre. And then he says, I heard you offered him that. It, it just causes problems. As much as I hate to say that, pay them both the same and sit in a room and negotiate. Maybe I'll say maybe from the cheap seats?
Are you really looking at the audience open for a question?
I am. If you want something, take a rip, man.
While you're here, uh...
If they're, as long as you guys are okay, that should take me.
Do you ever find that, do you ever find like one in your study, do you find a quantifiable reason as to why the nitrates spike? I mean, I run the stories, I'm from the newspaper. I run the stories from the...
Oh, I'm not talking to you.
You said it was okay, and they said it was okay, so now you're speaking. I run these stories, you know, from the NRDs all the time about nitrates from the top, don't get soaked up by the corner, whatever, and it goes down the, uh, whatever. So I'm wondering if you ever find that, is there ever a quantifiable reason, like, you know, our wells, from the sound of it, are anywhere from forty to seventy years old or older? You know, is the technology, the pipe, the filtering system, the, you know, when we rehabbed the well a couple of years ago and it didn't sound like it did anything? What, is there a, but we're also like just right above the turn off your well level? Is there a way to, so that's one question, is you ever find a quantifiable reason? In the middle of a city, you wouldn't think that our, you know, nitrate irrigation is real high. But if the water's coming from the southwest, do you ever find to go to the southwest and find out what the problem is and shut that down, hoping that it will pump through?
And that's kind of what the NRDs are doing.
Yeah.
If you, I didn't see you at the meeting we had up at Creighton a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
We, we went through, we're trying to, to talk to the NRD, we're trying to talk to farmers about. We did a study, used AEM data, which is electron, electronic magnetic data to see what's on the surface. We're finding areas that have really high sands and gravels.
Right.
And when you apply fertilizer to that, it's going right down.
Sure.
And so those areas, we're trying to convince people to get a program going that we pay them to put less fertilizer in that area. And that way, it stops that from seeping down so quickly.
And like, so you would be able to tell, if you did a study of the southwest, you would be able to see if there was something down there that... Because we do have a wellhead protection area, right? There's a sign right there.
Yep, sure.
Theoretically.
There's a map, but there's never been anything done.
Well, and our enforcement is what, a mile outside the city limits? We can do that? This is the same enforcement area zone?
Yes.
Or is it a different map? Okay, so that's one option there. But do you ever see anything like, you know, can, can nitrate levels come from a faulty bottom end of a well? Or a bad, an old lead pipe, or, I mean, I don't know how the things are made.
Yeah.
So do you ever find any other kind of reason there, like a new pipe? Because when you said, what does it go down another hundred feet? I mean, I, I live a five miles south on a farm, and if I call Buchanan or I call Peter Snatch and I say, I need to draw my well another hundred feet down, there's, okay, and they come out and do it. And the water's fine. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Is that a quantifiable thing? Is that a quantifiable thing for where we're at here that could be found during your study?
Yes. That's, that's one of the reasons we do test holes is yes. I think there, there is, yeah, there is, I think, some probability that we have water below where we're at. How much? I don't know. Is it quantifiable enough to drill that well? I don't know.
Right. Because your, your chart that showed the exact date that it started to spike should be quantifiable by some kind of ecological change? I mean, how far does the water come from?
Comes from miles. So in 20 years, so for, for Plainview, in 20 years, it's traveling from three or four miles away. So, if you think about this, if you, if you drop 1,000 gallons of gasoline two miles away, groundwater without pumping moves about a foot a day. So it would take, that's a general number.
Yeah, write that down.
Yeah, write that down. But groundwater naturally flows. Yeah, so if you, if you look at those groundwater contours, it naturally flows without pumping, high to low, high to low system, high to low pressure. But it flows at a much slower rate. Put a well in, we drop that level, now we have well water up here running down to my well like this. The gradient's greater, it flows a lot more and we start pulling it. So it takes a while for it to get there. You will see whispers of diesel at first or gas or whatever. I do a lot of media work. So you'll see whispers of that in your well. And all of a sudden, you've pulled that source to your well. And all of a sudden it goes, you see whispering, it goes boom. And all of a sudden I have a higher level.
Right.
Because I pulled that source too.
Well, when this first came out a couple of years ago, I was doing the same, not the same thing, you guys are way smarter than I am. But in like the 40s, O'Neill had high nitrates. In the 80s, Creighton started to have their high nitrates. And now, we're starting to have our high nitrates another 20 or 30 years past that, you know, and I'm just wondering if it's like a, do you see a shift?
Unsaturated zone, so a lot of that nitrates has to move through that unsaturated zone.
As a soak.
To get to the ground, to get to the water, then it moves quicker, moves much slower above. So if you have more fill above your water, it takes longer to get down, then it starts moving.
Because the, so like on your chart that you had that, in 2014, the last well that we had spiked like way super far up. Which, if you're local, leads me to a question like, can, so that, that groundwater that's being pulled there in 2014 when it spiked in 2018, that is something that happened in 14 that made that, began that process? Am I following what I'm saying?
I see you just standing, but it...
How long is it? We could not attribute it to a local irrigation well because it wouldn't have had time to soak through.
Right.
There's no point in asking the guy to put in an irrigation well just right to the east of Ballfields to turn it off.
Correct.
Because there's no way it would have soaked in enough to be a problem.
Right.
Right? That's, that's what I was after, thank you. When you talk about the top of the aquifer where the nitrates sit, is that like the groundwater level? Or is that, as you said, the nitrates float to the top of the aquifer? So we're actually sucking them down and then putting them back up through the well?
Yes. That's a good way to look at it.
So how long would it take for us to, like, where is the level that they're being, like theoretically, if a farmer put them out on the top of the ground and they soaked down, being pulled down by the well and then pumped back up through the well, how long would that process take?
Well, and again, if you have an irrigation well that's screened from top to bottom, so the screen's up right by the top of the surface of the water.
Right.
It's almost instantaneous, we're pulling it right in.
Okay.
If you drill a well and you screen it down here, you have to pull that nitrate down to here and you may not pump it far enough to get it down. But when it goes back up, it's a drug, those nitrates all the way across there, so now they've all increased. Next time you pump it, it drags more.
Right.
And eventually it makes it down.
You pull the pocket down to where you're pulling the water from.
Yep. Does that make sense?
Sorry, last one. Is there, is there anything we could do? Is there any technology on a per well basis where we could get the 11 down to a nine and you back in compliance immediately? Like is there a filtering system? So not a mechanical plant, but something we can do. Kurt would probably know this. I mean, you, Kurt, you've looked at it for 20 years now. Is there anything that exists like that?
There is. We looked at, I've looked, so one of the things I did at EPA gave us $4 million, what we call the WIN system. And we looked at trying to help, there was a group of us that tried to help with state of Texas and Kansas and Nebraska. Look at technologies we could use to do nitrate removal in situ. Can we look at injecting peroxide around the well and you slow it up? And you can, the problem is you grow bacteria and it plugs the well and ruins the well. So that technology hasn't been developed yet to where it's beneficial. It's eventually it plugs your well. So, there's some of that stuff out there. I'm sure that there's more and more every day, but...
Is it a question of volume? Like the amount of volume we use is not a filtration system? You have to have the huge plant to effectively filter it at that level?
You do. You add, you put a unit in everybody's home. No.
Looked at you guys all calling me dumb last month.
He just said no.
I said no.
Smart guy.
He said no.
You sell 1,000 filters a month at retail cost and tell me how dumb I am? I'm just kidding.
I have one question.
Okay.
I used to work with the city of Creighton. There were osmosis systems. It was like the number one thing that people complained about up there. And the water just tasted and smelled bad. Is that indicative of any of the osmosis or is it kind of unique to Creighton?
You know, I would have to say that, I don't know why it would smell bad. RO takes out the most constituents of everything. So things that smell bad like sulfates and all that gets removed.
Yeah.
Now, it's a very aggressive water. Once you get by the plant, you have to actually blend water with it because otherwise it's super aggressive. If you ever looked at underneath a sink or anything, all that pipe is plastic. If you put a metal or copper pipe past it, it eats it away in, you know, fractions of a year probably. So, if your pipes in town are corroded or have stuff in it, it's probably picking that up in town as it's going through.
Okay.
It's probably maybe a little bit aggressive. But they also, I don't know when this was, but you know, we replaced all the filters in 15 and did the whole other set in 18. And hopefully it cleaned up some sand. Because we did a pH corrosion study and...
And did Creighton end up having to blend more? They had to try and get back to more natural water now.
We did.
Avoid that corrosive effect.
We did. So we, when we got into there, it's kind of one of the things we found out is they were trying to bypass too much through the filter system and it was too corrosive.
Since our spike was recent, does it have, would it be attributable to the flood a few years ago at all? Would that have soaked in broad enough down?
Could.
Caused enough, I mean, it's not something that'll pass. You don't, you wouldn't, you would, it's something that will just pass?
No, I think there's enough. And like I said, the NRDS have already been doing soil sampling. They're required now, a lot of irrigated, they probably do soil sampling down the column to get to the water table. And we're seeing those nitrates built up above in the unsaturated zone. They haven't even made it down yet. Trying, I didn't mean to clean up. I wanted to clean up, I just, I know you guys have other stuff going on, so I'm trying to get out of the way. Any else to counsel?
Thank you so much for your time.
No, we appreciate the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll skip to number three, discussion action, Plainview Economic Development to present information. Somebody turn it off.
Wait, is there one more presentation?
Number three, information and lead discussion, oh, thank you, in business, composition, grocery and pharmacy issues, national trends in food desert, regulations, effects on health and welfare of citizens.
Yeah. Okay.
Give me 20 seconds.
I'm just going to pass it over.
Then give me 20 seconds. Then you can have the next one.
I'm assuming you've seen the map. Let's give you that.
Have you been done?
Did you want to say something?
Your role, Brian?
Yes, please, thank you.
Susan's got the main presentations for the first part here. There was a question raised just about whether there's urgency and why are you here tonight? And here's just my suggestion from a legal standpoint. Kind of pushing it to get it up tonight was my, my thought. Because, if you have somebody looking and proposing to build something and proposing to do something and they spend a whole lot of money and then you, then they're in here in front of you saying, you can't do this to me. I already spent a whole lot of money. I already did all this. I already did all that. On the other hand, if you notify the public that you're prepared to take some action on this, maybe do take some action on this, you're going to be the same council a year from now. You can always repeal the other. But if, there is some urgency from that standpoint, that if you have got something going on, and I don't think anybody's positive there is, but it, it's really unpleasant to have somebody come in here and stand in front of you and say, I just spent $50,000. You can't change it now. When you really could, but it's just unpleasant as the devil. So it's, it's not a bad idea to treat it with a little urgency because of that. That's quite frankly why I made the suggested document in the form of an ordinance, so you could just do something. If you bring it later to the planning commission and they go about their business and they have a hearing and they make you detailed recommendations, this is just a blanket thing that would kind of put the world on notice you're thinking about it. Okay, the rest of, the rest of the program is kind of Susan.
Okay. So, a few weeks ago, Jeremy was contacted by a company. They have only identified themselves for now as Copeland Development Corporation and will not tell us much else. In conversations with Jeremy, they submitted two site plans. The one that's before you is the Madison County Bank Lot on the west end of town. And the other site plan, which I think was scrapped.
It was.
Was on the west end of town at that junction of 13 and 20, just east of Farmer's Pride. So, they've been asking a lot of questions. They wanted, they're wanting to know our water rates. They're wanting to know sewer rates. They're wanting to know some technical things. They said that they are putting together very preliminary plans. And in their conversations with Jeremy, they identified themselves as a 9,000 square foot retail store that mostly sold food products, but not fresh food products. So, when they submitted that site plan in front of you with the actual layout, and, you know, I do the county, so I know what these dollar stores look like. And I have one of those in my other towns. It's pretty clear that it's a dollar store. And, so, never did we ever think that a town of Plainview would support two dollar stores. For a town of 1250, it's not something that we ever really thought about in the past. So we started looking into what kind of economic impact that would have on us. And, literally, if you just Google dollar stores in rural small towns, you're going to get 100 articles that are all negative and bad. And you start, and then I start, you start to see where some communities have started to fight back. And these are the law, the larger communities that have zoning and planning commissions, they've done planning studies, they have teams of legal attorneys, and they're pushing back. So, I've tried to head this up. They haven't told us who they are yet. But it's not too hard to figure it out. So looking at what we have here, I talked to Ashley at the pharmacy and how something like this would impact her. Talked to Jody at Mary's Restaurant, there were some impacts there. Obviously, our grocery store would have the most impact. So, it, it, I'm assuming you read the ordinance and the article that was submitted with it. There's a, there's a PDF printout here of dollar store impacts and this is basically on rural communities. Put out by the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. This you can look at. You can kind of see, basically what happens is when they move into a town, the first thing that happens is you lose your grocery store. And then the, the second handout is just my own personal research for you guys. What the impact of this would have on our community in itself. So in the rural area, the dollar stores hit the most vulnerable areas. They're looking at places where the manufacturing plant maybe has closed. The farmers' incomes have dropped. Dollar stores intentionally target poor areas that cater to low and middle income customers. Us being targeted by a dollar store is not a compliment to us. They are actually attracted to our low economic status. So, what they look at is per basket sales. Family Dollar in our town makes $2 million a year. Their per basket sales between $17 and $24 a basket. The average basket sale for a Family Dollar anywhere else in the nation is $9 to $12. So our Family Dollar is one of the top 10 in the nation. And they do provide a service and it's okay to have one, but I just can't see the sense in having two. So when they're targeting our low socioeconomic status, here's where we're sitting. 48% of Plainview is considered low to moderate income. 40% of the students at the high school, or actually public school, are in the free and reduced lunch program. That number is probably higher, but those are just the people that actually apply. 24% of our housing stock is low income rentals and 24% of our population is senior citizens. On average, the local grocery store is going to lose 30% of its business upon a dollar store opening. Jan can test this to that later. A dollar store will carry no fresh produce or meat and they only offer highly processed food options. They do affect the physical health of a community. In Oklahoma, they really took a look at that, where dollar stores kind of moved in and all the grocery stores moved out. And they noticed that, and they lowered the life expectancy of that area by 14 years. Dollar stores intentionally cluster multiple stores in low income areas. This strategy discourages grocery stores from opening and threatens locally owned small grocery stores. So we can look right here in a 50 mile radius of Plainview. We have dollar stores in either Dollar General, Family Dollar, or Dollar Tree, located in Creighton, Pierce, Bluefield, Hardington, Laurel, Neely, Plainview, North Fork, Madison, Humphreys, Stanton. That is in a, basically a 45 mile radius of us. In that 45 mile radius, there are seven family owned grocery stores. There are three large supermarket chains, all in North Fork area, and one midsize grocery store in the North Fork area. So, you have a two to one ratio already between grocery stores and the dollar stores, just between the small family owned ones and the small towns. If our residents were to lose this grocery store, we would be driving 10 miles to Osmond, 14 to Creighton, 27 to Neely, or 35 to North Fork. That creates what we call a food desert. And I'm dealing with that right now in the community of Pierce. Since they lost their grocery store a year and a half ago after Dollar General moved in. Plainview Family Pharmacy profit margin basically sits in the over the counter sales. We, we assume they lose a good portion of this and Ashley will talk about that later. But one of the economic indicators that we track every year to look at the health of our economy is net taxable sales. So between October of 19 and October of 20, the Nebraska Department of Revenue pulls this data for us. And in the city of Plainview, in that timeframe, we lost $3,000, which was expected because we were in the middle of COVID. Some businesses were closed, some were shuttered, some were cashing, you know, carryout, curbside, whatever. But then I looked at the city of Pierce, who lost their grocery store a year and a half ago, and they lost $43,000 in the same timeframe. And that is because those residents are traveling out of the community to get their groceries. While they're out of the community, what are they doing? Getting gas, going out to eat, doing things that they maybe would have done in town. Even the hardware store took a hit because if you're in North Fork, you're going to go to Menards instead of staying in their local, and going to Manzers and Pierce. Looking at the way it's tracking right now, Plainview's on track to actually get above and be in the, in the black for net taxable sales in this coming year. Pierce is on track, if it continues the way it is, to lose $62,000 in the next year because of the situation they're in. Other community impacts, people can argue, well, hey, but they're going to bring some economic impact to the area. Truthfully, they don't. Grocery products are not taxed. The impact of the dollar type store in Plainview would be minimal. I looked it up today, the total property tax revenue that we received from Family Dollar in 2020 was $4,440. And that's on the Pierce County GAS site. You can also call the county assessor for that one. Dollar stores only hire workers over age 21. The maximum number of employees they hire is nine. The manager makes 10.50 an hour. The local grocery store hires teenagers, gives them that opportunity to get that first experience in the work field. The only other place teenagers really can get a job in Plainview is either they're going to work for the City of Plainview Parks Department as a lifeguard or a parks kid, or they're going to work for Mary's Restaurant. Their options are very limited. So this would just remove another option for them. And our local businesses do give back to the community. For every dollar you spend locally, I think it's pretty easy to know that it turns into four. Especially if that person is paying someone locally, then that money even regenerates even a little bit more. We are worried about the decline in the overall health of the community if the food desert happens. In Oklahoma, where they, like we talked about the, the decrease in life expectancy. The impact to Main Street businesses. The grocery store, kind of like your post office in your school, is a barometer of the health of your school, of your community. When you lose a school, that goes, you know, that goes down. If you lose the post office, that goes down. If you lose the grocery store, it affects the other businesses on Main Street because you have less traffic and reasons for people to go downtown. So if you eliminate that traffic, you really are going to be looking at a ghost town down there. So, the other thing is, Plainview has that high population of low to moderate income and senior citizens. Combined, they make 72% of our community. People in these categories don't always have access to reliable transportation. You'll see a lot of them walking. So, and the seniors are not always comfortable driving outside of the community. They like to shop locally and that's one of the reasons why Family Dollar does so well. Because they don't want to drive to North Fork or, or another place. So, if a desert occurs, the people in this population are going to be the most affected. We, economic development... We, Economic Development, we're working with the city of Plainview. One of the big things Jeremy and I worked together lately is attracting housing developers to the lots north of town, finding ways to attract them there, giving away, you know, lots for free. What can we do? And the number one reason why developers won't build in an area is if you have no grocery store, they're not coming. And that has been my biggest challenge in the city of Pierce. Pierce being so close to Norfolk, you would think it'd be a natural fit to be a veteran community to Norfolk, and we would have developers knocking on our door, especially when we're offering free land. They won't come because there's no grocery store. And, you know, you don't save money by shopping at dollar stores. The items are packaged smaller, you pay more cents per dollar. One example is a pound, one pound bag of flour was a buck, but I looked at the grocery store, and that five-pound bag of flour is like $2.50. So that's an example of how you're not really saving money, but sometimes those people in those lower incomes, they're not looking at that dollar's descent. And then other businesses do rely on the health of our store, including our restaurants and visiting food trucks. So I'm not opposed to competition. I'm not opposed if another grocery store wanted to move in, and they were willing to provide that fresh food, meat, or a pharmacy providing, you know, prescription drugs. But this is not a fair competition. When one entity can get everything at wholesale, and the grocery store can't sell it wholesale, and where they're making their money on those dry goods and canned goods and paper products, it's not fair representation. So I kind of give a lot of this information to Bruce. He was nice enough to work really fast and drop this ordinance. If you read through it, it tells you our intent, our purpose, our why. And then the last page is, and so basically what we're saying is, we, sure, dollar store wants to move in here, you're just a mile, a mile from the nearest dollar store or a mile from the grocery store. And here's some requirements, because that puts them in the outskirts of town, where they're going to have to pull a special use permit. And there's some requirements for the special use permit. 25% of your store is going to have to provide fresh food, meats, vegetables, and dairy. You know, you're going to have to offer this, this, and that in order to come in here, because we're not willing to sacrifice what we have just to allow something else to come in. So I brought Ashley here, and Jody, and Jan, and, you know, they can talk a little bit about the impact that this might have on them. I've kind of given you my position, so I'll just turn it over to them and let them, you know, talk about how it would affect them.
On the pharmacy side of things, it's pretty general knowledge that a dollar store doesn't have a pharmacy at this point in time. Not saying that that isn't a possibility in the future. I came into this community a little over a year ago to be a full-service pharmacy, and that includes over-the-counter products. As far as a dollar store goes, typically, like the grocery example, we'll just say a tube of aspirin, for example. You're going to get the full size of the pharmacy, but then the dollar stores break it down into smaller sizes and end up charging the same that I charge at the pharmacy. So, you know, cost per ounce, you're not saving any money, even though you are paying less at the dollar store. I use a lot of over-the-counter products to supply our nursing home, especially. Every resident up there needs that aspirin cream on their knees and their shoulders, and if that business is taken away from the pharmacy, I'm just not really sure where that margin will be made up at. I know 15% looks like a small number, but it really is a make-or-break situation for a full-service pharmacy, so.
Susan, probably, yeah, pretty much everything I would say. I mean, we've been a locally-owned business here for 26 years, going on 26 years this May, so. Yeah, this would be devastation for us, if we're going to have a Family Dollar and a dollar store.
It's up to them right now.
It is, and I've got a lot of very loyal customers that come in, and we're trying to take care of them the best we can. But we're always trying to get that one extra person, and it's really tough, so. And I guess it's up to you guys if you vote this ordinance in or not.
You know, we get our food trucks, but we are low on, you know, sometimes we don't have what we need. We run up to the grocery store. We love having a grocery store in town. We can run up there and buy milk. We've been having to buy ice from them, for goodness sakes. We depend on them. And I live in Pierce. I work here. I own half of the business here. I live in Pierce. If I want to make a taco and I don't have lettuce and tomatoes, I have to drive all the way to Norfolk to go buy that. It's horrible. It's absolutely horrible. We have a lot of elderly people in our town. They have nowhere to go to get fresh fruits and fresh vegetables. It's absolutely horrendous. You would be missing so much by not having a grocery store here. We finally have gotten a pharmacy in Pierce, but they're not a full-service pharmacy. So if we want to get any of that stuff, we have to drive to Norfolk. So for you guys to lose them, not even speaking as Mary's Restaurant, but speaking as a citizen of the community, you'd be missing out on so much by losing these two businesses. I just don't think you realize how much that you'd be missing out on.
Well, I'll say, like, for the pharmacy, the manor uses the pharmacy to manage the patient care, so you would lose that ability. The city owns the manor, so that would not be good for you. The city has almost $40,000 wrapped up in Ashley's business with the transition from last year, and then the pledge to help her with her student loans. So it's in the Economic Development Department's best interest that that doesn't happen to her. I've talked to Brooke quite a bit. I don't know if you want to have anything you want to add?
Yeah, you know, when I took over the news office, we were doing between $15,000 and $20,000 in office supplies every year, and of course, Amazon doesn't help that. Quill shipping direct doesn't help that. But with the dollar store, when the dollar store came in, it dropped to about $2,000 a year. And, you know, a retail thing for me is, that's not my main business, but it was something that we had built up as a third division of what we do. And I have more people come in and ask if I've got something. And the downtown businesses work together really well. If I don't have it, I'll send them over to see Ashley. If Ashley doesn't have it, she'll send it down to Mitch's. I usually get people in the, you know, the door that say, I say, "Well, I don't have that." You might go over to the pharmacy and look for a battery. And they're like, "Well, they sent me over here," you know, or something like that. And so I just, you know, there was, I've been here for almost 20 years, back for almost 20 years. We were killing ourselves 15 years ago to find a retail business to bring into this town like that, and nobody wanted anything to do with us. And now 10 years later, two of them want something to do with us? There's something fishy going on there, right? I mean, it's, and if you look at it from the, Susan touched on the net taxable sales department, Plainview has been between $8 million, $8.5 million, down to $6 million sometimes in a bad year, up to $10 million in a really good year, over the last 20 years. So the addition of a dollar store either means that we lost $2 million gross, or they're not putting out the numbers that we say they're putting out. And there's two that want to be here? I mean, we're still at about $8.5 or $7.5 million in net taxable sales a year of taxable things that are sold in our community. And so, you know, that feeds our LBA 40 fund, that feeds the manor, that feeds the library. And if those things aren't taxed, it doesn't do us any good. So, you know, personally, I think a mini Walmart would be the end of a lot of businesses in our town. And I think a lot of us are sort of regretting how easily and quickly we pursued that venture. And I'm not ashamed to say it, because I was, you know, retail, we were all just killing ourselves. You guys have all lived here for 20 years. We were killing ourselves for retail 20 years ago. And now we got it. They don't, they are not part of the chamber. They don't give any donations to anybody. They don't advertise it. I mean, I'm not here to dog on one store or the other, but none of them do. They're a corporately-owned store. All the money spent there will go to Pennsylvania, because they aren't paying people $15 an hour, I can tell you that. And I can't hire anybody for less than 12.
Yeah.
At my shop, so.
So, I mean, as your developer, it's my job to bring opportunity to you, and if this was a great opportunity, I'd be leaping all over it. I mean, honestly, if this was like Baumgart's or Menards, or anything that we, you know, hardware store, or anything else, I'd be like, sure, yeah, what can we do to help you? But in this situation, there's been enough studies, bigger cities have realized the negative impacts. There's nothing positive here. There's no economic gain. There's no community gain. For me, I, you know, you pay me to tell you my thoughts, I'm telling you, I wouldn't do this. I'm not for keeping out other businesses at all. And we've worked really hard to turn that around here. I mean, in the last three years, you've had 15 new businesses. We've used our LBA 40, our RVDG, our IRP. We've spent probably, well, about $180,000 in that, and our return on investment has been like $1.5 million. We're about to open up a brand-new store, or another business here shortly. We are doing really well on Main Street, you know, and trying to build that back up. Something like this would really set us back further than you can imagine. And my biggest concern, honestly, is the people. The people that these types of things kind of prey on, and what that would do to your community if they were mostly affected by this, so. We wanted to bring this to your attention. I know it's a lot of information all at one time, but timing is critical. This entity has not identified themselves as a dollar store yet, but we've been holding them off, delaying getting some information, you know, playing that waiting game as much as we can. The minute they do identify themselves, and we try to do this after the fact, it's going to look like retaliation. And I don't want us to be in that situation. Stanton just got to that situation. Stanton's been, they've been breathing down their back for nine months, a dollar store, and they finally came down last Monday, allowed them to come in, and the grocery store is now up for sale, and the guy is quiet. And he will never sell that store. Everything that that person has put into that is gone, so.
Susan mentioned, I kind of rushed this. When she first called me and said, "Yeah, we might have to do something to avoid too much competition in Plainview," my first thought was, "Oh, you have got to be kidding." You know, for 30 years, I've had people tell me twice a year, "You bastards in the development company, you stopped Alco 30 years ago, and we would have had an Alco." Well, we wouldn't have, and that's not so, but, you know, you just hate to make that punishment of restricting competition. But if you read this literature, there is a valid reason here to look at doing something like this. Now, this ordinance is a rapidly-assembled compilation of 20 towns, most of them much bigger than us, so what they did doesn't really fit for Plainview, but at least would get something on the book for you. And probably, you might at least consider the planning commission looking into it, getting you some details, making more regulations. But I think it would be fair, from the standpoint I mentioned earlier, to get something on the book that we might be thinking about regulating this. You could always change your mind, but if it proves out that it has the effect that we all currently have presented, you probably want something on the book to limit it. That's why we rushed it so much, in the middle of tax season.
As much as I, as much as I am an attorney, this is not competition. These types of stores are not competition, because we can't compete. We absolutely will never be able to compete. If you can order $2 million widgets a year, and I can only afford 200, there's no way I can beat that price. That's not competition. You're just killing us, so.
Right. One thing I could say is, I used to golf with a store manager of a grocery store in Burwell, and the dollar store came in, and he walked to the dollar store because he wanted to see his competitor. And he came back, and he says, "I don't know how they buy pop so cheap."
Yeah.
He said, "They sell it cheaper than what I can buy it off of a truck." He said, "I guarantee you, I will not sell a third of the pop that I have sold ever." And he hasn't. So he said, "The dollar store can buy it and sell it cheaper than what he can purchase it off of a truck."
Right. And I mean, and I've heard the argument, you know, my son, Mr. Economics himself, "You can't do that, Mom. You can't, it's capital. You got to let it happen." And I say, "Cole," he goes, "The grocery store is different. They sell produce." But you can't live on produce alone. You know, if your profit margin lies on the dry goods and the paper goods, and that other place can get it wholesale, and you can't even buy it off the truck as cheap as they can sell it, then that is not fair competition. And then you look at, we don't just do economic development, we do community planning too, and what's best for the community and the health of the community, so. We're throwing a lot at you. Do you guys have questions, concerns?
I mean, this ordinance can be modified, and we could change the terms, but I just tried to put together the very basics to get something on the book to say, "Yeah, sure, we're going to look hard."
And if you look at the last page, we do say, you know, "Hey, if you come in, and you're on the outskirts of town, and you pull that special use permit, if you can provide a minimum of 25% of your sales floor, or more than 3,000 square feet for fresh, pre-daged meats, fruit, vegetables, and dairy, or if you can provide prescription drugs, so be it. But if you can't, then no, you know, so it.
Yeah, level that playing field if we want to be here.
If you pass this, and I'll read the second, third reading, put it out, and get the notice out to the world that this is being thought about. I mean, that gets it on the book. You'll still all be here, more than likely, six months from now. And if you get input and you want to do something different, do something different. But not a bad thing to get it on the book. So you don't have to tolerate that person standing here in front of you saying, "You can't do this to me. I've already started." I mean, that would be the bad thing, seems to me.
Well, we'll get the evening moving along, though. Common sense, for the people that are not here, going to read in the paper, or listen to this later on, common sense obviously tells us we can't afford a second dollar store. So, yes, let's go ahead and, I make a motion to pass ordinance 964.
We're still on number three.
Oh, okay. But I definitely agree with all your guys' comments and support.
You know, I was just sitting here thinking, if I would have been sitting here when they voted for the first dollar store, I would not have voted for that dollar store. Just because I know what you people are going through, you know, we went through it too somewhat. But to me, if you have no dollar store, then you guys are missing out on all the opportunities. If somebody says, "Hey, I want this," you're missing out on opportunities, saying, "Okay, I'll get that for you. I'll have it in a couple of weeks." And you can expand your business, with them coming in, you got no chance. I mean, they just have everything, and it's, it is what it is. But so, yeah, I definitely think we should pass it.
Any further discussion, Lynn?
No.
Okay. Item number four, discussion-action ordinance number 964, to regulate business discount store development relative to preservation of fresh food, grocery services, full-service pharmacies, health, and welfare.
Motion to pass ordinance 964?
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Voting, Bob?
Aye.
Hannah, Zepson, Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes on the first reading.
Okay, make a motion to pass the second and third reading.
I'll take it, Ben.
Okay. Any further discussion? Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Hannah, Zepson, and Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes on second and third reading.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, businesses.
Thank you for bringing, Susan, thank you for bringing all the information.
Yeah.
That was, the biggest thing that sticks out is the 48% of residents concerned for lower, moderate income.
Which is great on our grant applications, because you want to be more than 40. But in this situation, not good.
J.O., it's what, 51?
Item number two, lower B presentation, if you're consulting your project.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to you. You guys want to take a break? You guys are doing pretty hard.
If that's all right.
Sure, go with them. I mean, you guys have been working since like 6:00, so that's fine.
I can't see O2.
I didn't know if you guys brought anything or notes, something you'd like to add for you. You look like you want one, Kyle. Some of these are a little different always, but did you guys need one?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I wanted one for you to show it up. I ding that against you, that's all right.
Free cardboard paper, recycled puzzle, that's cool.
I actually thought about bringing you guys pens. I figured you might like that better than notebooks, actually.
Are you coming out with the grocery?
That didn't sound right.
No.
No.
That's okay.
I didn't. Don't fix that.
Thank you. First time here from Athens in a year.
And thank you for waiting for our business to get done. I appreciate that.
We're not problems.
That was interesting to listen to.
Sounded like a, it's a fourth of the time.
We think so.
Item.
I don't understand it, though. I thought that the dollar stores and Family Dollars were all owned by the same people now.
So like, Susan was saying, like, there was one, what, there was a Dollar, a Family Dollar in Madison, and they opened one up in Humphrey, a dollar store, and it actually drove the Family Dollar out of Madison. Because they're competitive like that now, they're getting... Because they're competitive like that now, they're getting aggressive.
They have a little better business model, they can compete. But by the time they do that, they kill the rest of the small town.
Right, right. I agree, yeah. Well, their goal is, the Dollar General's goal this year is to open twenty-five thousand new stores. And they're well underway.
And I'm from a community where there is Dollar General, you know, obviously different dollar store than what's here. And they don't hire any of our residents. They bring in their own people from different communities. So it's not even an employment opportunity for our, for our residents here. So, thank, thank you. So, sorry to impede on your time.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. That was an important issue, I think.
Something you've probably never seen before in a meeting.
The what?
Probably never seen an ordinance like that before.
I have not, but I think it's a good idea, actually. I was thinking about that for other communities that I go to to mention that, you know.
Can we, can we copyright that and sell to J E O?
Copyrighted.
I'm going to steal it on my way out.
Several years ago with this Mission Lifeline and the Heart, we had a meeting in South Sioux City and was from Iowa, South Dakota, Nebraska. And the cardiologist, you know, happens to travel around, he says, you know, the one common thing I notice in every small town, they all have a Casey's, a Subway, and a Dollar General. And I says, doctor, and so what, I says, we have a family dollar. And he's like, ooh. He's like, you're big time. You don't have a Dollar General. I said, we tried to do Dollar General and they wouldn't come, and then we got family dollar. So I'm sorry, no, Roger, I'm Steve.
I'm there with J E O.
Nice to meet you.
And I'm Steve Parr.
Steve, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all.
So thanks for having us tonight.
Absolutely. The floor is yours.
We really appreciate it. We like this opportunity. Again, my name is Viv Nibotny. I'm the client manager for the City of Plainview. I'm the one that stops by and I usually don't get to see any of you guys because you're always working or whatever. I did know the former mayor because he was around town a little bit.
Yes, man, yeah.
Darren, I stopped by though and I see Jeremy a lot. And, or at least I try to get up here about every three months, about every quarter. Sometimes that works out with COVID and maybe not so much, but I do try to get around.
If you see me at work, it's a bad day. That means you're sick or injured because I'm working on ambulance.
Where do you work?
In the Midwest, and I usually go to Omaha or Lincoln.
Oh, I see. Yeah, well, okay. Well, tonight we're here to discuss, you know, your water. We're here to talk about your problems, solutions, options, you know, whatever you guys want to talk about, which we like to just sit here and discuss. We're not here to present. And again, if you guys have any questions, please ask during, you know, if Roger says something. Because he's a technical guy, so he'll be doing most of talking tonight. Again, I have Steve with me. Steve does a lot of work down the road in Osmond. You'll see Steve there a lot. Roger just lives in Norfolk, so he's very close to you guys. And Roger's also been working here for about twenty years now. And I think tonight's discussion, you'll find out how much Roger really does know about, you know, the water around here, well sightings. He's been working a lot with the N R D. So let's see. Steve, did you want to say a little bit more?
I, I just, I just wanted to tell you that I'm a principal at J E O. And so work with Roger and a lot of engineers on, on projects and make sure that we're doing a good job. And, you know, we know this is an important project or a potential project for you dealing with your water. And, but it, it would be an important project for us as well. And so really what it comes down to is we're here to help you, you know. And if you decide to select J E O for this project, you know, we're going to work hard for you. But you're going to be part of the decision-making process here. And Roger's going to go into a little more detail about, you know, how this all works. But a lot of important, you know, potentially important decisions for you. And like I said, we're, we're just here to help you any way we can get through the, your water supplies. So I guess with that, I'm going to turn it over to Roger and.
So again, as Viv kind of said, I've had an opportunity to, I've been at J E O for over twenty years now and had an opportunity to work in your community a lot of years. Especially my, my predecessor retired in two thousand and six. He kind of kept Plainview near and dear to his heart. But that's kind of when I was able to take over a lot of the projects and service for Plainview when he left. So I've been doing a lot of projects and maybe not always on the water system, but including looking at the landfill and the C V, transfer station, just all those various components within the city. So we have a, a little presentation for you tonight. At least maybe try to spur some discussion for you. And so just on the front, I just wanted to let you know our contact information is there. And then inside here, there's, there's an insert. So I'm just going to ask you to kind of set that to the side for a minute and we'll kind of come back to that. But I want to kind of go over and try to share with you why we believe we have kind of the knowledge, how we can help you with the financial resources. And just, you know, again, letting you know that I'm only thirty minutes, thirty-five minutes down the road and, you know, close location I can get here. And that's been beneficial over the years. Like, there's been a lot of times when staff says, hey, can the surveyor stop by and those sorts of things. And so we're always kind of in the area. So I'm going to kind of try to cover those three main points. But I also want to give you a little history, a little bit of demonstrate some of the knowledge here, share some things with you. So on this handout, on the inside, on the left, left-hand page, and why are we here? On the upper left-hand side, there's a, a graph. And what I did is I just graphed the nitrate concentrations of all your water wells, you know, since two thousand and seven. And if you see the blue line, that's kind of the line that's kind of tripped this whole situation off. You can see the blue line, when it climbed above the green line there in late two thousand and twenty and, and early two thousand and twenty-one, you had basically two consecutive quarters that were above ten parts per million. And that's what that green line represents. That's the EPA limit. And so once you had two consecutive quarters and you're basically down to one supply well, that's when, would cause the state to issue their administrative order. And so that's basically why we're here tonight is to, one of the steps in the administrative order. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. In addition, you can see the, yeah, yeah, the yellow line represents your, your Goodwell at this point. It's well eighty-nine one. And so basically that, that well is being sampled once a year right now for nitrates. And so I just took the slope of that line and projected out in the future to see when, when would that well potentially have a problem with the nitrate concentration. And you can see, you know, based on the slope of that line, maybe in twenty, June of two thousand and twenty-three, i- if things stay the same and, you know, you may have all your wells above ten parts per million at that point. So it just kind of gives us a timeframe. What kind of time are we dealing with? And I, I'll be the first to say, do nitrates always follow the trend exactly? No. Look at the graph. I mean, you can look at the blue line, it was going up and, you know, in two thousand and fifteen, you were getting close and then all of a sudden it dropped for a little bit. And then when we get, you know, a few years down, just a couple of years down the road, we're back up at ten. So if you would project that blue line through there, you, you would have, you know, it crossed at about the right time, but it was kind of unusual it took that drop. You know, why these things drop, it can be an influence of the weather and there are just a lot of other factors that can cause these things to change dramatically like that. But at least the yellow line gives us a little bit of timeframe of what's, what's going on and what the future maybe looks like. So I don't know. Do you guys have any questions about the graph at all? Any observations you have?
I was just wondering what your thoughts were of why it dropped.
Just. Yeah.
That flood was in nineteen, so.
Right. You know, and we had the drought in two thousand and thirteen. And, and that's, we saw a lot of communities spike in two thousand and thirteen because of the drought. And then the next year, they kind of dropped. And there may have been a little bit of a delayed response in your, in your guys' case that, that, that could have been partly the case. But I will, again, nitrates are just, the way they move through the subgrade and it's just highly variable. And so, but they don't, in general, they tend not to go down. On very, we've had a few instances in communities where they have gone down. And it's usually like we'll have one well go down where they might drop. But when, here, we're looking at, you've got four wells within the corporate limits and we're seeing all four wells go up. So I think we have a pretty good idea of what's going on in your community. So maybe make you a little unique in that regard. The, the administrative order, I want to talk a little bit about that. So because of the nitrate limit, it triggered that administrative order. There's some objectives in there, five things that you guys have to meet. I, I kind of circle four of them. Our objectives that you guys can do on your own, that you don't need engineering assistance. One of them is an objective that you do need some engineering assistance with. So I, I just kind of want to briefly review those. So I don't know if you guys have taken the time to look through that administrative order. I know Jeremy has, but just sharing with you, the council. You know, number one, nitrates are acute toxicity, which means they can affect your health dramatically and quickly. That's kind of what that means. And it basically affects the kidneys and the people that are most susceptible are infants just because their kidney, kidneys are not developed. So that's why we're, that's why they're being targeted here. So they, the state requires you to provide safe drinking water to infants under six months old, to pregnant women and mothers who may be nursing. And again, trying to protect those with young kidney systems.
So did they kind of backed off on the, the health requirements for elderly? They used to also have some mention or ban on over sixty-five or something.
They, they don't mention it as much, but there is, there is some side discussions going on because actually they're starting, there's a lot of research going on about linking nitrates to cancer. So there are actually some research going on with that. And that potentially could drive this ten part per million limit even lower. So, but generally, I would say people with kidney systems that are compromised need to be aware.
And they made a big deal about that, you know, you guys were on the project, I think, but working Creighton. And it was that elderly and infants was the big deal back then. Now they kind of backed off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, that basically is wording directly from your administrative order. So besides providing safe drinking water, so you guys typically do that by buying bottled water and making that available. Number two, monitor on a quarterly basis. Again, the state's going to help you with that. They're going to send, curate those test kits and that's going to just, going to happen. Number three, you know, continue to inform your consumers about safe drinking water, the nitrate levels, et cetera. So anytime you have a customer come in, set up a new water account, you know, they need to be notified. And usually probably at least once a year, you're going to have to public notice these types of situations. Number four is kind of where I think we come in, help you develop it, develop and implement a plan to comply with the Safe Drinking Water Act. And we're going to talk about that a little bit in a minute. And number five is, what I would do, another point I want you to know is you can continue to use your wells as long as they're below twenty parts per million. So just because they're above ten and that exceeds the state, or the, the state and the federal limit, you can still continue to use your wells as long as they're below twenty. But once you go above twenty, then you have to, then you have to turn them off. So that's something for you to know. Because I know in the past that you go back and you look at, you know, well sixty-two one and well fifty-four one, when those went up, they just said, well, we're not going to use them anymore. And basically there's not any data in the, the data, in the database that I pulled this data from. But you, you could continue to use those if you so chose.
But you've got some restrictions or some guidelines that you have to meet, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you have to make sure all your other testing is up to date. And again, staying below the twenty parts per million, so, yeah. So, all right, so that, that gives you a little bit of an overview of kind of what the administrative order is about. Another thing that I just wanted to share and make a point of and make sure that you're aware of is J E O has a lot of knowledge regarding Plainview and the specific water supply system or, and your source, your water source. And we, you know, several years ago, we kind of saw this coming. And so we started working with your community and started the source water study. So the source water study, the purpose was to try to, again, look at the aquifer, look at your, where your water's coming from. There's been a lot of discussions about the direction of flow in the aquifer. But on top of that, the N R D has been studying the aquifer and all of the natural resource district. And so there's a lot of new information that's available. So we wanted to start compiling and bringing that information and looking at it very specifically as it regards Plainview and how does that impact Plainview. So off to the right there, some of our geologists and the subconsul, they've been starting to pull that N R D data together and create computer-generated drawings. This data, we, you might hear me use the term A E M. There's a lot of acronyms I use. So stop me if I use one that you don't know, want to know what it means, et cetera. But this A E M data helps us get a better look at what's going on in the subsurface. You know, when you do a well, you can, you're looking at one point. So here when they did this, this data, they're flying TransAct. So you remember the helicopter maybe flying around and the giant antenna that they were dragging around, et cetera. They're collecting a lot of data and it gives us a more continuous picture of what's going on. And in this source water study, a little bit like I talked about last month, we, we did aquifer pumping tests. We've been working on the geology and they call that the hydrogeologic. When you look at the water and the geology together, that's hydrogeologic framework. We've put together groundwater models specifically targeted for Plainview. And we talked a little bit last month about, hey, we think you should consider expanding that model. So I think that's something, I think you guys have yet to make a decision on whether we want to do that. And then the reason we want to do that, those things and take all this information, we, we want to kind of synthesize and look at your long-term water supply investigation and help you with that investigation, look and see what other options are out there. And that's kind of what that drawing to the right indicates. We, we did some cross-sections in some different areas to the south and east of Plainview. And I'm going to explain that even in, more in a second here. Let me cover the last bullet point, which is just, in this source water study, we have the opportunity to help you decommission wells. And wells that are not being used, that have basically been abandoned, can be decommissioned as part of this source water study. And we've got some fun, funding and financing set up for that. So again, that's just all information that J E O has that we can help you with and work with you. And again, we helped you attain a grant on that project so that basically you're paying like twenty percent of the, the whole study or even a little bit less than. So let me talk a little bit more about the geology, just one more time. And that insert that I had you set aside there, on the front of it, it's got the geological cross-sections. And I just wanted to, I don't expect you to be able to read that, that, that's, you're going to see this in bigger format in the study, in the final study, when that's coming out. But it's a little bit of information for you. It just shows you some of the knowledge and things that we have to share with you. And the top, the top band of geology here, that, that's basically the type of drawing we would have had if we only looked at your well, the wells in the area and what we could, could create without the A E M data. And in the bottom, is with the different colors, the greens and the blues and the yellows and oranges, that shows you what we can learn by using the A E M data. And then you see a red box there. That red box indicates, that's basically a box around your city wells and Dry Creek and just your area here. And this geologic cross-section, if you just kind of want to know where it's running, it's, it's that red line in the small box. And you can see where the, where those three lines intersect, that's basically Plainview. If, just to give you a feel for where things are at. And the red line, you can tell it's going to the southeast. And where you see the blues and the greens, that's heavier soil, like a clay material. And you can see as you go to the, to the southeast, we can get into that clay material. And that turn, ends up being a cap, which can kind of serve to help protect the aquifer and, you know, prevent those nitrates from entering the aquifer. Whereas you can see where the red box is, you know, the green's on the bottom, it's not on the top. So it's kind of in the wrong place, you know, as far as protection. And we talked a little bit about a window last time and how there is a window in this area that allows the nitrates to get into the aquifer. And you can kind of see that with this drawing, that there's no green, there's no blue over the top of that. So we're basically have an open window that's allowing that contamination an opportunity to enter into that aquifer. So, so that just kind of, again, gives you an overview of some of the information and the knowledge that J E O has that we wanted to share with you. At the bottom on the right-hand side of that, the fold out there, what I just wanted to share with you are some key milestones in the administrative order, things that we're going to help you with. Gives you a little bit of history of just where the nitrates are becoming an issue. And then in the gray box, there's some red dots. So by April of this year, you need to, you know, have a contract with your professional engineer in place. So that's one of the milestones that you need to meet. And then no later than July of two thousand and twenty-two, we have to complete our preliminary engineering report. And, you know, you basically have had to have an opportunity to review that. And I want to kind of pull over and put it in the park here for a second and talk about what is a preliminary engineering report. So preliminary engineering report is basically what we would write. And this document, first it needs to look at the health of the water system. So, and we're not just going to look at the water wells, even though we know that that's kind of the most critical problem. The state requires that we look at the water distribution system. We look at the water tower, we look at all the components. Um, the state requires that we look at the water distribution system, we look at the water tower, we look at all the components. Um, because they just want an overall understanding of what the health of your system is. And for the most part, from our past experience, I think everything's sitting pretty good. And we know that the water quality is gonna be the main issue. Then in the preliminary engineering report, we begin to develop alternatives. Those alternatives are kinda, what are the options for a remedy for the solution? Is it water treatment? That's something I know I've heard you guys talking about. Staffs asked me a few questions about. Um, is it looking for some sort of other alternative water supply? And that can look different in a lot of diff, you know, in some different situations. Does that mean looking for an area in the aquifer that's not contaminated? That would be an alternate water supply. The, uh, we're gonna talk about funding in a minute, but some of the funding agencies are gonna want us to look at, are there communities that you could work, work with? Are there rural water systems that you could work with? And so there are other options that this preliminary engineering report needs to cover and we need to look at. And not only do we look at the capital costs, we have to look at the cost to operate those things. We also need to look at the environmental impacts. Like, just because, let's say we do a water treatment plant, we also have to kinda look at the backside of a water treatment plant. It's gonna have a waste product. And, you know, can we put that in your lagoons or what's that gonna look like? What kind of, uh, discharge permit is that gonna take? So there's a lot of environmental considerations that we have to look at, uh, as a part of this. So, um, that's, that's some of the information we'll put in the preliminary engineering report. And in addition, when we look at all those costs, then we gotta calculate what's the impact gonna be to the rate payers, to the customer. You know, and how much would you have to sell your water for, basically to be able to pay these costs and retire any debt if there's a project down the road? So those, uh, that gives you an idea of kinda what's in a preliminary engineering report. And, um, you know, when you look at twenty twenty-two, you might think, well, that's, that's a year down the road. I promise you a year will go pretty fast. And especially if, if we decide we want to go look for a well in another location and we wanna go drill a test well or something along those lines, that takes time. Like, you gotta hire a company and drill a well, then we gotta take a water sample. It might take a couple of months to get, uh, the results back on the water sample if we do go with the state health lab. Cause they have certain criteria that we, we have to meet. So, um, so that's one of those milestones. And that's kinda the, the, um, preliminary engineering report explanation there.
Do you have areas that you think we would be drilling test wells?
I do. I mean, those two cross sections that, oh, well, that, that kinda funky drawing in the upper right-hand corner, there are some areas where I think, based on N R D data, in the best available information, I think we have some opportunity to look, at least the obvious things to me are to the southeast. I know you, you had mentioned to me, like, what about going to the north and stuff? And I think there's still, there's some areas like within the first two or three miles of plane view, I don't, I'm not too excited about those areas. Just based on the nitrate concentration data that the N R D has. When we go beyond that, there gets to be a gap where there's not a lot of wells. And part of that is, as we go in, go to the north and northeast, there's an area up there where it's hard to find water. And so, um, there could be some additional research that we could look at, but, um, I don't have, I don't have an exact answer for you at this moment, so.
Do you have any idea yet how far southeast?
Um, well, we've looked, there's a couple of different target areas that we've looked at. There's some that are, you know, in the six to eight miles to the, to the south. And there's some a little further that, there's kind of a larger area to the southeast, if you get a little more to east. So, um, now if you, kinda if you make a triangle, you take Foster, Pierce, and then an imaginary point to the, to the west of Pierce and to the south of Foster, and you make a triangle in that shape, you kinda have an, an area in there that I think would be a potential target area. And that's one of the areas I'd like to, you know, look at the authorization on the, the groundwater model and be able to get the geologist to, to start simulating that and take that information and see, you know. Now, based on that information, we kinda know we have this triangle, but we know the groundwater's kinda moving in direction X. And so we wanna make sure we're at the upstream side so that, um, we're gonna have twenty-year life in our well, those sorts of things. So we're gonna expend that kinda money, so.
I mean, just because you're dropping in that one point doesn't mean that water from over here is gonna be good.
Right, there, there is some, there is some ability to forecast whether it will be. So, yeah, they have, uh, one of the things that'll come out of that source water study that we were talking about before, there's an idea and a map that's called your wellhead protection area. And where we look at the time of travel and we say, if we put a water particle in here and we have a well here, how many years will it take to get to this well? And we can, we can basically predict that and give a very good estimate. And so then what we do is we go, okay, we got a well here. We wanna look twenty years, we wanna look twenty years upstream. And what does that look like? And that's what the wellhead protection map helps us do, helps us do, so.
Were, were you here during the whole presentation of the Miller people?
No.
They had a one section of that diagram, underground water flow from southwest to northeast, which I had not seen before. Now, the, the Creighton, if I remember, you know, was kinda going toward the Missouri River. It's coming from southeast toward Creighton. From here, they showed in their prediction at least, a water flow underground that crosses the Dry Creek Valley and continues on northeast, which seemed odd to me.
Yeah, and that, that comes from, uh, it comes from the, the best available computer model that the state has.
Was it, is it based on underground elevation somehow? If the water is flowing downhill, that's kinda the way they?
Yeah, we have, we have something called gradients in the groundwater.
Underground.
Yep. And actually, if you, in the source water study, and I presented a little bit of the information last month. But, um, you know, we can basically see the friction loss, if you will, of the water moving through the aquifer. And then that's how we come up with these directions.
Generally speaking, you agree with that flow analysis, that it goes northeast from here?
Yeah, I mean, that's what the state's regional model is showing.
Okay.
And when we did the, when we did the water supply wells, when we analyzed the city's water supply wells, we did get a little bit of a gradient going south, but the geologists were pretty much of the, uh, opinion that, you know, we were only able to turn the wells off for about twelve to thirteen hours before we had to turn a well back on to fill the water tower to keep the city in water. And they're like, we just weren't able to give the aquifer a long enough time to relax and, and sit still. But yeah, in those wells, we could actually see all the way across town, I could see, you know, when we turned this well on, I could see it across town.
Yeah, but that's, you know, that, that total underground flow is kind of a critical question. It's to which way are you looking for protection?
That's right, that's right. And that's where the wellhead protection is coming.
I think, yeah, I think a lot of, you know, you might just in general think, oh, well, it should be easy to just find a, a water source. And it's like, no, it's not because there's all these setbacks you have to deal with. And, and so it's a, it's a complicated, uh, process to look for a new, you know, new water supply. And then when you're looking at potentially out of town, boy, you wanna make sure you're in the right spot. Because if you're gonna spend the money for piping and all those types of things.
Well, what's with, um, the area you're thinking? I know a few people in the area, farmers. What is your opinion on your future of fertilizing their crops? Is that gonna put limits on what they can do even more yet?
Um, you know.
Or putting a city well out there won't affect them at all besides having a wellhead on maybe a corner of their property?
Right, right. Um, yeah, I don't think, a- at this point, most communities don't, uh, implement any sort of regulation and I haven't seen it. Regulations, if anything's gonna happen, it's gonna come from the N R D. And it's not going to be because of the city's well. You know, the N R D, N R D is looking big picture and they've got their phase one and the phase two areas up here that they're, they've been working through. And so that's where any regulation's gonna come from. So, um, the thing is, you know, right now, the farmer's there first. And if the city wants to put a well in.
Right.
We've gotta be a thousand feet away. The, the state's, the health department's gonna require that. We gotta be a thousand feet away from their wells. So that's gonna make it challenging for us, um, to be there. So the thing is, I will say, once we're there, then now it makes it harder for the, we don't want, uh, you know, somebody else to encroach and put their well within a thousand feet of ours, once we went through the headache of finding a place to put our wells. So, so there's a little bit of a, uh, I don't know, chess game kinda there. But for the most part, you know, those guys, if they're gonna put a pivot up, a lot of them have got their pivot up.
Right, yep. It's just matter of.
And, and where we're looking at, these are heavier soils, you know, so they're, they've got a lot more better protection. And that's, that's kinda what we're wanting to take advantage of.
This, this came from the radar scan operation?
Um, yeah, the bottom part is, yeah, yep.
And you mentioned green and blue is heavy soil?
Yep, yep.
What is orange?
Orange ends up being, um, something that's more transci- transmissive, transmissive. So and then even red is even more transmissive.
More so than yellow.
Yep, even more so than yellow, so, yep.
Um, you talked about decommissioning the wells. Um, that's something that would have to be done or?
That, that's, and that's not necessarily, when I say that, I don't mean the city wells at this point. I'm meaning like private abandoned wells that maybe are not being used. Um, that, and that just goes with the source water study. But, you know, I, I think I'm aware of one out to the, west of the existing lagoons out there. And then there's a couple others that I'm kinda have heard about. And so we're looking at things like that that maybe can be done to just help protect the aquifer. We're not necessar, at this point, we're not talking about the city's wells, so.
We're already gonna do that through our source water grant, though?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, so that's gonna happen, yeah.
Yep, we have the ability to do that. So any of them, you know, if you know of additional ones that we don't know about.
Yep.
Yeah, let's bring them to the table and start get that list compiled, cause that's kinda one of the next steps. Um, so kinda then, we were talking about milestones. So in a year, we gotta have the preliminary engineering report done. A year after that, you have to have your final implementation plan and submit it and approve by the state. So that basically says, you know, we've done the engineering report, here's what our engineer recommended, here's what the city council thinks. Cause you don't necessarily just have to follow my recommendation. That's what J U is here to try to do, is lead you and guide you, for sure. Um, but, um, but ultimately you guys are gonna make that final decision. We submit an implementation plan and then that's gotta be approved by the state. If they don't approve it, you basically have thirty days to revise it, resubmit it, and it kinda goes through that process. So they get, it gets pretty serious at that point. Um, and then as part of that implementation plan, there's not a schedule yet. Um, you kinda get to help decide that schedule. But the things that we have to do, we have to, once you decide if we're gonna build something, then plans and specs have to be put together to bid it. You have to set a date, when you're gonna have that design done, when are you gonna build it, how long's it gonna take to build it? Get it constructed and ultimately, when are you gonna be back in compliance? And that's what the EPA wants to know. Cause they're looking over the state of Nebraska's shoulder going, when is the city of Plainview gonna be in compliance? Because, you know, we want this to be done. And generally, I would say three years might be the maximum amount of time you can ask for. They're probably gonna push you for eighteen to twenty-four months, but that just kinda gives you a flavor for what they're probably thinking.
So with that being said, uh, just again, thinking of examples, if we do go out of town, I imagine in my head right now, they go along the highway ditch, dig a trench, bury a pipe. We probably have a pump or two along the way to flow it. Do you have any treatment at all in that?
Well, well, you know, if, if we can find a water supply that's safe outside town, and I, I use the city of Wayne as an example.
Yeah, who else does this?
Yeah, when the city of Wayne's got, their wells are five miles north out of town. And that well's able to pump the water all the way to the water tower in town. So you don't have to have multiple pumps, you know, along the way, as you're kinda thinking. So, yeah, so, and, uh, we also, as part of a project, we created the, a rural water system. Maybe you've heard of it, it's called the Wausau Rural Water System? Yeah, Wausau Coal Ridge. So, you know, we're pumping water out of the ground in Wausau and it goes all the way to Jerry's Hilltop. You know, and, uh, we're pumping water out of the ground in Coal Ridge and it's going all the way to Belden, you know. And so, and there's, that's one pump, comes out of the well and we're able to push it all the way there. You know, and so it's, that's not an impossible task. And it's, it's, we do it quite frequently. We're just, we're doing a project down in Syracuse right now. We're gonna push the water like ten miles, I think, so, um.
So it's starting to be pretty common going out of town?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's not uncommon to, to look somewhere, you know, and, and Wayne was in the same situation you were back in the eighties. And that's why they, they ended up going five miles out of town to find that, that aquifer. Where they can access.
You know, just thinking irrigation wells, okay, drought year, guy runs well on water, he just drops a downpoder. Can we ever do that?
Um, there, obviously there, there are certain design conditions, the criteria we have to meet for municipal well. I don't know how technical to get here. But we don't want the water to cascade inside the well. In other words, when it comes in through the screen, we don't want it to fall. If anything, we want it to rise just a little bit. If we, if it falls, then we have the situation where maybe letting oxygen into the aquifer and then we can have some chemical reactions occur and that can begin to cause the well to lose some of its capacity.
For a new well that's deeper yet? I mean, are we at the bottom of where we're at? Or are we?
Yeah, most of your well, most of your wells are at the bottom of the aquifer right now. And we'll continue to, that's where we try to put them is at the bottom. But we will put the screen at the bottom, you know, excuse me, but you do have the opportunity. Your aquifer is what we call semi-confined, so it does cause the water to rise in the well. It's not quite artesian where it's coming out of the ground, but it's coming up. And that's, um, basically the difference then between the top of the screen and where the water, the static water level, that's, that's the column we can pump out of. And then the amount of water that the aquifer will let into the well, that kinda controls the maximum pumping rate. So if that water, it's only gonna come in at a hundred gallons a minute, we can only pump it a hundred gallons a minute. If water's gonna come in a thousand gallons a minute, we can pump it a thousand gallons a minute, you know? Um, I talked a little bit, I think last month, about Osmond. And we talked about their wells and how their newer wells are, um, just a little bit deeper and it's in a tighter sand. So the shallow formation will produce water like a thousand gallons a minute, but it has nitrates. And the, the sand at the bottom is a little denser. It only lets water in at about three hundred gallons a minute, but it's denser and it's been keeping the nitrates out. And so they've kinda said, well, we'll, we'll have two of those wells and provide water. As, and now we've got good quality water. We maybe don't have it in the exact quantity we want it, but we got quality. And that's more important, cause you gotta, you gotta a water tower. And that helps buffer that demand, so you don't have to have the bigger, larger well. So that all said, kinda you're, um, you know, I know we talked about these things and I want you to turn to the back there. How do we pay for this? What does that look like? I don't know if you got a little bit of an explanation for this the hour before, but, um, in Nebraska, we have a process called the, the Water Waste Water Advisory Committee. And that's what WEWAC at the top stands for. We call, everybody calls it WEWAC. So the Water Waste Water Advisory Committee. And that, um, and J U has a specialist that just deals with this. His name's Terry Meyer. So his name's there in the upper right-hand corner. His whole job is, he helps us engineers and the communities that we work for pursue the available financing for these types of projects. So I just, right here, I kinda got some bullet points of what does that look like? What does that process look like? So let's talk about that for a second. How that process starts out is you need to be on, you need to do a need survey every year. So the state of Nebraska sends a need survey out to you guys every year. And you have to fill that out and usually has to be turned in by the end of December. And those need surveys, just maybe you talked about the one in six road program, where you're kinda looking at the short-term and long-term future. Will you do the same thing with your utilities? And basically the state of Nebraska, they wanna know everybody's needs across the whole state. They compile that into a list. That list is that next step called the Intended Use Plan. And they'll take those lists, and that's how the state of Nebraska competes with Nebraska, Kansas and Iowa and Missouri for funds. And how they get allocated a certain percentage of the federal dollars that are available. And that, and then that Intended Use Plan is the priority list that the state creates, you know? They've got everybody's needs, they can't do them all, so they have to create a priority list. So the Intended Use Plan is that priority list. But usually before they'll hand that money out, you've gotta have your preliminary engineering report, which you talked about. And then you, once that report's done, we submit it. And we also do the pre-application, which is just about a, a short two-page application. It says, here's what we think our project is and here's what we think it's gonna cost. So it's, and then it asks you a little bit of information about your community. We submit that and that WEWAC committee gets together the third Tuesday, like every month. They look at these reports from all across the state and that committee includes people from the health. And that committee includes people from the health department, from the Department of Environment and Energy, from, uh, the Community Development Block Grant or HUD program, and also people from the USDA Rural Development. So all four agencies get together and they go, they look at that community and they go, okay, if we package our money this way and that way, we think we can give, buy down the user rates and reduce the cost to the customers in Plainview by giving them this financial package. And so they'll, they'll kinda start then to have a dialogue with you. And so that's kind of what those next few bullet points are about is, they'll look at, they'll ask you some eligibility questions and then you'll respond to those eligibility questions. And maybe simultaneously, they might have questions about the engineering report. There might be something that, especially the USDA is kinda known for this. They're like, well, you wanna do this, but we think your project can be more modest by doing that. And so we'll look at that and, you know, either agree or disagree and maybe give our reasons why. And then, uh, then there would maybe be, uh, then the final financial offer that'll come out of the committee to you for, to help you pay for your project. And then, uh, then you have the opportunity there in Red to accept or reject. You know, that's your, your choice. And so I've had a couple of communities reject and I've had communities say yes. So it, it's, it's nothing set in stone as far as being forced. I guess you're not forced to make that, to use their money, if you will. Then you kinda initiate the project. And one thing I kinda forgot to mention is, we've talked a little bit with a few of the funding agencies already as far as, is there some funding available to do this preliminary engineering report? And so we've, we've kinda come across a couple of opportunities for you. One is more federal dollars oriented, so that would be an opportunity. And so they would cost share, um, in the, in the study if you complete their application. And then kinda their main string attached is they kinda want, they're part of this WEWAC process, but they want, they want first dibs at maybe funding your project. So they're kinda like, if, if you use our money to, for the study, then we would like you to consider using our money to finance your project. So, so that's something that we've, we've done and been looking at for you already as well.
Are those always kinda available or is there deadlines or something new or?
You know, the, the.
You kinda act like maybe this has never been out there or?
No, this is out there, the, the WEWAC committee meets, like I say, the third Tuesday of every month all year long. The, everybody's financing renews at a different point in time. So this SRF financing renews with the state's budget like on, uh, July 1. And, uh, the USDA fin- financing renews whenever Congress gets around passing a funding.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, what's the?
Usually it should be October 1st, but you and I, we know how that goes. So, uh, so everybody's financing kinda renews a little bit different. The, one of the grants that we were looking at for this study, basically, they always have, the state always has two of them available. And I know one of them has been taken and the other one's out there and available. But they also have an opportunity to go back to their national pool and pull more money. And so there's an opportunity to do that. So it's not, um, and honestly, right now, the state has had a bunch of, uh, financing that, a couple of large communities in the state, uh, refinanced some of their large projects and returned money to the state because they privately refinanced them. And so the state's got some money that they're sitting on that they're trying to find a way to spend, so. So that kinda gives you, I wanted to kinda try to make the point, the JEO's got some great knowledge about your system, about your area that I think is valuable to you. You know, we wanted to cover this funding issue, cause I think that's important for you to know. And just keep in mind that we've got an office 30 miles away and we can be here pretty quickly. So those are things that just want you to be aware of, so.
Yeah, we do, we do these projects all the time, so. I don't know what your background is, you know, this may be like, oh my gosh, you know, we have to do.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, okay, so I would be the same way, right? And, and, but, uh, you select us, we're gonna guide you through this process, you know? And but, you're gonna make decisions, we're gonna give you options. You're gonna, you're gonna make the final decisions because every option or direction has pros and cons to it. And a lot of times it's cost or it may be some other things. So we're not gonna come in here and say, this is your only option, this is what you absolutely have to do. We're gonna present all the options that are available and then ultimately, you're gonna decide which direction, you know, you wanna go based on your feelings about it. But I think the funding thing is a big deal because, um, Roger was, when Roger talked about the, that rural water project, I was, when we were talking, we were kinda kept in touch on that project from time to time. And it was just amazing what, uh, funding was available to those communities. It was almost like they gave it to them to sign up for this project cause they saw it was a good project to get all these communities kinda tied together and they all benefited from that project. So it's just interesting to see what, uh, what these funding agencies will, uh, you know, how they'll help, try to help communities. Cause they, they know you, you know, you can only afford so much. And so that's part of that study too, is to see, okay, which, you know, what, you know, based on the options, what, what is your, you know, what's the debt service gonna be and, and what's the impact to the users? And I think the, uh, funding agencies try to shrink that back so it's a, a number that people can somewhat afford.
We talked about the 48% poverty and the median household income and all those sorts of things come into play. And there's not, I wish I could say that there's a standard formula that these funding agencies use, but they just, there isn't. Standard formula, every community's different. So I've talked too long apparently, so anyways. But, you know, and then what, what happened on the Waukole project, I'll probably never see again. And, you know, they had, they had some nitrate issues, they had a community that had had an administrative order for far too long. And that, it basically, the EPA was telling the state to sue the community. And, you know, you don't comply with your administrative order, they can't fine you like $12,000 a day, you know, if they, if they sued you. So I don't, I hadn't, I haven't seen them do it too much. They're more go after industry than they do municipalities. And as long as you're making progress, they usually kinda look the other way, even if you miss a deadline by a little bit. But, uh, but if you ever trip and stumble or stop making forward progress, then they'll sue you all the way back to where you first, first tripped or whatever, you know, it's kinda how, how they play the game. But at least you have an idea of what your schedule is, you know, before it even starts.
I don't know what, you know, what Wassau's situation exactly, but I've taken care of all that stuff for Coal Ridge. They've been well satisfied with the process and, you know, them working out the financing from all the 16 different directions. The system has worked well for them. They, they kind of enjoy being in the Waukole.
Yeah, I, I'm, you know, here I am, like, I think that project's been up and running for at least 10 years. I, I get the monthly bank statement every month from the NRD, the old person for the, for those meetings. And they make budget, like they, it, it's, it's paying for itself and it just kinda, when we started that, everybody's like, you guys are dreaming. But, you know, I, I'm gonna give some credit to Stan Staub at the NRD. He was, he caught the vision pretty early on and then a couple of other people kinda stood beside him and, you know, and away we went. But it was a hard sell for a long time. There was, there was a lot of resistance. And I know there's some discussion, I was telling Jeremy, I know something's kinda going on in the background because, um, South Dakota and Lewis and Clark NRD are talking and there's the Devil's Nest Water Plant. So they've got something going on, going up there. And I know the health department is collecting information about everybody along Highway 20 into the north. So I'm sure that's gonna come up as we go through the study, that we're probably gonna, you know, if we're not doing it, somebody else is gonna have to be helping, uh, compile that information, so.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think we don't have to make a action tonight, um, we can do it Tuesday. Pam will be able to watch the video if she's other councilman, so.
What action would that be?
To choose Miller or JEO. Um, you guys can do it tonight if you want to, you can wait for next Tuesday, which is our next council meeting. I know we decided not to do it during council meeting because of obviously the lengthy time. We would be here till midnight with all of our other things on normal council meeting, so.
Appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Um, so thank you. It gets up to you guys, if you guys wanna tail it for Tuesday and think on it, or if you guys wanna make an action now, it's.
I think we should tail it.
Okay, and that's up to you guys. Do you wanna make that motion to?
I'll make a motion to table, we'll get to the action until Tuesday, the, the council meeting.
Senator? Any further discussion? Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Awesome, we thank you guys for coming down, thanks for waiting.
Thanks for having us, we appreciate it.
If any, if any questions would come up between now and then, feel free to contact Rob directly.
I have his number.
You have his number.